Call meeting to order. The Quorum being present, the three hundred and seventy-sixth annual town meeting will come to order. I'd ask that you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask for a moment of silence in honor of our troops serving the tribe. Thank you, may be seated. I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. Since the warrant articles are printed in the advisory committee report, which you have to reference, I would entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. Is there a second? Has it been moved and seconded, all those in favor of dispensing with the reading signified by saying aye? All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. I have nominated Scott Roberts as assistant moderator for this meeting and would entertain a motion to appoint him. Is there a second? All those in favor of appointing Scott Roberts as deputy moderator signified by saying aye? All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Would the assistant moderator and the following tellers please stand to be sworn by the town clerk? Chris Mararchy, Penny Scott Pipes, Ron Robertson, Heather Santez Lozo, Frank Snow, Peter Toppin, George Kelly, Jack Manning, Susan Frankel, Rich Travers.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemn this way to recall the responsibilities of the position to which you have been appointed this evening? Thank you very much.
And thank you all for your dedicated service. We have with us tonight, we believe Senator Hedlund is somewhere on the premises, I don't see him right now, I didn't see him outside, and Representative Kentwell. No, I think everybody's campaigning out in front of the building, they are here. At this point, I'd ask the chairman of the board of selectmen to introduce the members of the board of selectmen and the town administrator to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I do that, I want to just take a second and thank all of you for attending the meeting tonight and participating in the town government. It's a very important task that we take seriously and we're glad you do too. I'll go down, I'll start at the far end, Town Council Jim Toomey. Save the applause to the end. Selectmen John Dandy, Selectman Rick Murray, Selectman Sean Harris, Selectman Joe Norton, the town administrator Patricia Van Kezy, and the town accountant Meg La May.
I'd now ask the chairman of the advisory committee to introduce the committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce the members of the advisory. I'll start down at the end of the panel. The esteemed Mr. Anthony Antonella at the end, Kenny Connolly, Bob DiLorenzo, Kevin Dolan, Frank Judge, Susan Day Leader, and Maureen.
I'd ask the chairman of the school committee to introduce the school committees.
Good evening. The school committee, from left to right, is Bill Johnson, Rich Hebert, Brenda Bowen was here, she will be back, Jamie Strabino is in traffic on his way, Jim Callahan is here, our interim superintendent, and Paul Donald, our director of business and finance.
My name is Richard Bowen and with me is town clerk Bernice Brown. I am the town moderator. The moderator chairs a meeting and decides questions of order. Please let me take a couple of minutes to tell you how the meeting works. Town meeting is a gathering of the registered voters of the town convened in this chamber as a legislature to deliberate upon matters set out in the warrant. We assemble here as brothers and sisters, each with an equal voice regardless of age, official title, or position. Not a partisan body, Situate Town Meeting being more ancient than our country's political parties, is a place where each citizen legislator acts and is presumed to act solely in the service of our town's best interest. These have been our customs since sixteen thirty-six. In addition to these memorable traditions, the bylaws of the town, the laws of the Commonwealth and the town charter, and the reference book Town Meeting Time have set out our rules for guidance. For your information, the rules we will follow are as follows. First, all non-voters, including press and children, but accepting professional consultants advising town boards must sit in the non-voter section in the left front bleachers, over here. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters to speak provided they are duly recognized and unless a timely objection is raised. Persons wishing to address the meeting must first identify themselves to the meeting by name and address each time on rising to speak. This traditional courtesy accords respect to those present and is made bold to posterity and to those who keep our records so that they may report your participation accurately. Further, any speakers representing a board, community group, or a client should make this clear to the meeting should they speak. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to ten minutes for a presentation. Sponsors of resolutions will be allowed up to five minutes. Sponsors need not use the full allotment of time, as the meeting has always had respect for the proverb, brevity is the soul of wealth. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has had a second. Members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone. I will attempt to recognize members in the order they arrive at the various mics throughout the room. Only after recognized by the moderator may a meeting member address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor or speaking without recognition or not customary show disrespect to your fellow voters and will not be allowed. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on an article and three minutes on the second round. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until persons who have not yet spoken have had their turn. Speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion that is on the floor. Please address only matters of general interest, do not indulge in personal discussion, or in any way attack motives of any meeting member. You may ask questions of any officials through the moderator. Be advised that an official may choose not to respond or may respond in a way that displeases you. Neither moderator nor meeting has the power to compel an answer, in which case your sole recourse is to draw your own conclusions from the response and vote accordingly. Should you tire of a debate, you may choose to suffer in silence, or you may offer the motion, "I move the question." That motion terminates debate if approved by the meeting by a two-thirds vote. Please remember this important procedural point, you may not make a motion to move the question after making a speech. Please just make the motion and hold the speech. On voice votes, I listen to whether the motion passes or fails. If you question my call and my hearing, please rise. If seven or more voters rise, I will ask for a teller counted vote. The tellers will count only those in the bleachers or floor seating sections. Persons standing away from the seating will not be counted. Section twenty thousand one hundred and fifty subsection G of the town bylaws allows the moderator to declare two-thirds votes. If the moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, we will take account. The acoustics in this room are very bad. Anyone having trouble hearing may feel free to move to a section where they think they can get a better sense of the sound. Please turn off your cell phones or at least set them to a non-ringing position. Are there any honorary resolutions, Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We make this resolution today, it is bittersweet. If I could ask Bernice Brown to come up. A town clerk who is retiring, it's bittersweet and then it's sweet and then we look forward and we join Bernice in her quest for happiness, a restful retirement. It's bitter in that we certainly will miss her expertise and her dedication to the position of town clerk. She's served that adroitly for the past nine years and Bernice, the board of selectmen and the entire town of Situate certainly appreciate and thank you. And having said that, I'd like to make this presentation in recognition of dedicated and distinguished service to the town of Situate, Bernice Brown, town clerk, two thousand and three, two thousand and twelve, given at this town meeting, April two thousand and twelve.
It's been an honor and a pleasure to be town clerk. I very much appreciate what I've learned and been able to do for the last nine years. And I thank you all for your kindness throughout this period of time. It's been a great experience. I'm looking forward to retirement, but there's much of what I will do here that I'll miss a lot, but thank you all again.
I see Senator Hedlund and Representative Kentwell have joined us. If you could both stand and say hello, please. Before proceeding to business, I'd just ask for a memorial moment of silence in honor of three of our officials who've passed since our last town meeting, Dan Shea, Evelyn Ronstock, and Tom Snow. Thank you. Article one, compensation of elected officials. On the motion, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town, I move that the town establish salaries and compensation of all elected officials as follows, for the sum of six six thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Selectmen, chairman, and legitimate expenses, fifteen hundred dollars. Selectmen, members, and legitimate expenses, to the total of two thousand dollars for four selectmen. Assessors, chairman, and legitimate expenses of twelve hundred dollars, and assessors, members, and legitimate expenses in the amount of eight hundred dollars, and that's four hundred per person. And the town clerk, personal services of sixty-one thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, discussion Chairman Vignani.
Thank you. This is a standard article that shows up at every meeting. The only difference to it is that the, as we just acknowledged, is Bernice is retiring, so the salary for the clerk is going down to be in the classification of someone at the beginning of that process. Other than that, the selectmen and the assessor salaries have not changed.
Chairman of the advisory committee, Mr. Sanding.
Good evening. I think Tony explained it thoroughly. It's listed there in the booklets, a small variation due to the change in town clerk position. The advisory committee recommends approval of the motion.
Discussion from the floor, seeing no one at the mics and there being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted declared unanimous. Article two on the motion, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I make a motion, I just want to make one quick note. I see most of you have these booklets in front of you that the advisory committee put together. That's really the culmination of six months' worth of work. It takes a lot of work to get that together, but it gives you a really good synopsis of everything that we'll be discussing tonight. And I just want to thank the advisory committee, Mark Sanding, and the rest of the group for preparing that. That being said, I'll move on to article number two. I move that the town reauthorize the following revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, which shall be kept separate and apart from any other monies by the treasurer, and which will be deposited receipts received that may be spent only for those sources identified below under the source of funds without further appropriation during fiscal year two thousand and thirteen and as identified below under use of funds, and shall be expended under the direction of those so intended. Said annual amount expended for each revolving account shall not exceed the amount indicated below under the annual expenditure. And I'll read them all one by one.
Have they printed the warrant?
Yes.
As printed the warrant.
As per the warrant.
Seconded, Mr. Harris, discussion Chairman Vignani.
Again, these are pretty standard articles that set up revolving funds for different services. What this is, is really just an account where the money comes in and it can only be spent on that service that it identifies, including the senior center, planning board fees, food establishment, school budget, transportation to the school, beach sticker, and all these things where the town receives funds for these services. They cannot be crosswinkled into any other thing and it gets reconciled evenly.
From the advisory committee, Chairman Sanding.
Once again, annual article, similar to number one. The advisory committee recommends approval of this motion.
There being no one at the mics and no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted declared unanimous. Article three, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town authorize the establishment of a flu vaccine revolving fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three and a half, which shall be kept separate and apart from other monies by the treasurer, and which shall be deposited receipts received that may be spent only for those sources identified below under source of funds without further appropriation during fiscal year two thousand and thirteen and as identified below under use of funds, and shall be expended under the direction of those so indicated. Said annual amount expended from each revolving fund shall not exceed the amount indicated below under fiscal year thirteen limit. And this is for the flu clinic fees. The use of the funds is for flu vaccines expended by the town nurse in a limit of one thousand dollars.
Seconded, Mr. Harris, discussion Chairman Vignani.
Thank you. The previous article, we met, we passed other revolving funds, this is just a new one that we need to add to the list, which is receiving money and paying for getting flu vaccines.
From the advisory committee, Ms. Carver.
Good evening. The advisory board board voted seven one in favor of this article and recommends approval of the motion on the floor tonight.
There being no one at the mics and no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted declared unanimous. Prior to beginning action on Articles Four and Five, both the chairman of the board of selectmen and the chairman of the advisory committee have asked for the chance to address the body concerning fiscal matters for the upcoming year. At this juncture, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. What I'd like to do now is just give a quick overview of the two thousand and thirteen budget process. This year has been an easier one than the past years. I'll just go through the sources of funds, the uses of funds, and some of the reasons why it's been a little bit easier this year. As you all know, your property tax went up two and a half percent, which is our main use of funds. New growth has stayed level over the last two years, and again, we're preparing all this stuff to last year in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five or two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. State aid stayed relatively level, a slight decrease of about seventy thousand dollars. Local receipts are projected to be level with last year, maybe a slight decrease of about seventy thousand dollars. And shared expenses, although they increased about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, typically they increase, you know, well over five hundred thousand dollars. So when you add all that stuff together, the net that comes down to the departments is a better year than it has been in the past. One of the biggest effects on the budget, though, are the effect of the override that was passed last year. The effects of the override were, for the school department, we were able to stop three consecutive years of having to lay off teachers and other administration in the department. The effects of the town from the override money that was passed allowed us to help our public safety departments, including the police department and the fire department. And lastly, the major use of the funds on the town side were really five hundred thousand dollars, of which four hundred thousand dollars was set aside to improve the town's infrastructure and a hundred thousand dollars to help repair buildings. Overall, the budgets for the town and the school increased by two point three, two point four percent. In past years, it's actually gone down, so this year was a little less tedious than years in the past. What I'd like to do is just take a quick second and talk about some of the major concerns of the town administrator and the board. Over the past several years and probably decades, the focus of our budget has been primarily on the operations of the town. And what has happened to some extent is the assets of the town have been neglected. Our equipment, our buildings, our infrastructure have not been getting the attention that they need. Capital expenditures in the past have usually been done on an emergency basis. The vehicle won't pass inspection, the roof is leaking, the car won't start. This has resulted in our assets in our town becoming old, outdated, and frankly, worn down. For the past two years and in the upcoming years, we're trying to address this concern. Some of the examples of things that we've done in the last two years are, one, we added an IT director, you'll see right there, and he has really taken control of our computers and our systems there, and has updated and stabilized and secured our computer systems and our databases. Another thing, as I mentioned before, is the town is committed to allocating hundreds of thousands of dollars each year into the infrastructure of the town. In the past, to fix our roads and our, very little has gone to our seawalls, but it's either done through grants or federal money or the money that we get from the state for chapter number. The town is committed to allocating this override money year after year again, and they've done it again this year. Another thing of note is the DPW department. As Prodigy's current town, they take a proactive stance, so when a road is open and it's an area where we know the water, the sewer lines are not good, that we go in there and we replace them then so that we can save money and improve the infrastructure at a lower cost. So all these things are in the mindset of what we've been doing. This kind of transitioned us to the article that we're about to discuss, chapter, excuse me, article number four, which is the capital planning. I want to take a second and thank the capital planning committee. Jimmy, he was right there, he was the chair of it. These people took the time and reviewed every single item of every single department's request. The booklet that they went through was probably this thick, and they spent many, many hours going over this. Last year, the town administrator implemented a comprehensive process for the capital planning. It's very detailed, it's very organized, and it attempts to look at all items from all departments in an objective manner. This year, there are twenty-four items that we'll discuss tonight totaling about two million dollars of expenditures and about five point nine million dollars in an authorization. And I'll talk about that further in a minute. What I'd like to do is break the capital plan into three different groups. The first group, and again, this is article number four I've transitioned to, the first group are twelve items that relate to the enterprise funds in the town. And these items are not funded with your property taxes, they're not funded from the general fund, they are funded from the operations of whatever enterprise fund they're associated with. In the case of tonight's meeting, they're the water department, the sewer department, and the waterways department. They include the funding of additional projects that we've been going up for years, for instance, INI projects, the infiltration of water into our system that needs to be processed, that's rarely rainwater, and they include the replacement of vehicles that all are within the budget constraints of that enterprise fund. And every one of these enterprise fund's budget is at least at a breakbeat in status. So that is the first twelve items totaling eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The second group of items are nine departmental items totaling five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. These items are items from specific departments, like the fire department, the DPW department, the accounting department, or whatever the item has to be. These are, includes vehicles that are either scheduled for replacement or will significantly improve a process. These items are funded through two ways, either through free cash, which is money that we accumulate through operating walls of town, kind of like retained earnings or net income, and, or they're funded through borrowing. If you have to borrow for the money, then it eventually affect the operation in future years when you pay for it. The last group of items are three items that I want to discuss individually. And these are, you know, three important items for the town and one of the main things for discussion tonight. The first one is a two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar item to complete the school technology plan. This is a multi-year project. The school has already spent over five hundred thousand dollars on this plan, and this is the final year of it, or the next year of it, where in the past, they've really worked on improving and building a fiber optic network. And this year, the plan includes an addition of network switches, adding wireless technology, purchasing new computers. So that is definitely a step in the right direction for our school system. The second item, which is one of the two probably more controversial, more discussable ones, is a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar article for the design, engineering, business and site analysis, surveying, appraisal, cost estimates for the improvement in design and reuse of some of our major public buildings. That's quite a mouthful, I'll try and say it in English now. We're putting a plan together, which has been discussed for years now, to deal with some of the inadequacies of our buildings in town. And we discussed about this in selectmen's meetings, but a preliminary plan that we're putting together, our preliminary model, would be doing something like moving Town Hall to Gates, moving the police and fire station in some sort of joint capacity up to North Situate, which will allow better service to the west end and to Minut, and taking the middle school and building a new middle school where the Town Hall is right now. These buildings are very old, Town Hall is fifty-three years old, Gates is ninety-six years old. Hopefully, the cost of the school portion of this, we've applied for money through the state, through the MSBA, and typically, they fund between forty and fifty percent of a project. So that one piece of a component will hopefully be funded by help from the state. A number of consultants will be used for this. There's been a lot of discussion about, is this feasibility study? We did the Habib report, and is this just another copy of that? That's not the case. We're going to hire a lot of consultants to come in and actually give us answers. We're not going to get a list back from people that says, do this, do this, do this. We're going to find out whether a middle school can fit on the land over by Town Hall. We're going to find out what it costs to build a joint police station, where it can actually go, what the setbacks have to be, and all this sort of stuff. And our goal is to move quickly on this project so that by the next town meeting, we can actually have options to come and bring before the town to see if they want to proceed in this manner. There's been questions about how did we come up with the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? We guessed. We don't know what it will cost. If it costs less than that, we'll put the money back in the general fund. If it costs more than that, then we'll come before you and ask for more. But what we believe is that the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will allow us to make a significant progress on figuring out if this project will work. The last item that I'm going to assess, and then I'll sit down, is the five point nine million dollar authorization for an energy savings contract. Another one of the big others. The town has undergone The town has undergone an audit of all of the town buildings, and we found that there's several million dollars worth of energy savings initiatives that have been identified. The book is somewhere over there, so we have this huge report, ten million dollars worth of projects. What we hope to do is partner with this company called Amaresco to have them come in and implement these improvements. The twist to this is that Amaresco guarantees the savings in your utilities. And what they do is they actually prepare a financial analysis of every project so that you can take the expenditures of the cost of doing the project and match it with the savings that they've guaranteed so that essentially, the project pays for itself. So for example, if we need to replace the windows at Wompita, and it costs ninety thousand dollars, and it's going to save us thirty thousand dollars in electricity every year, then we'd amortize the ninety thousand dollars over three years, reap thirty thousand dollars worth of savings every year, and after three years, replacing the windows will have paid for itself. If, say, one year, the, the savings are only twenty-eight thousand dollars, then this company has guaranteed that they will make the savings that they say, make it up. So, so it seems like a good, a good initiative. What we're trying to do is have minimal or no impact on the cash flow so that there's no impact on our operating budget, so we don't have to deal with laying off any positions or cutting anything else to fund this project. Excuse me, I'm almost out. The program includes schools and town buildings. It does not include any buildings that may be demolished in the previous article that I just talked to you about. So if we're planning on knocking downtown hall, we're not going to go replace the windows. There's no timeframe on the completion, so it's not like we have to do five point nine million dollars of the projects in one year or two years or what have you, and there's no minimum annual amount to spend. So it's kind of somewhat of an open contract to get this stuff done, but of course, we want to get it done because it pays for itself. This article gives the Board of Selectmen the ability to authorize up to five point nine million dollars of the projects for a specific list of projects that are in this report, and it will allow us to initiate these projects both prudently and quickly, and will give us flexibility to move forward with this stuff, as opposed to having the constraints of the timeline of town meeting dictate what projects to move forward with. Okay, I'm going to stop now, I've gone over the general budget and article number four. Mark?
Chairman Sanders. Good evening, everyone, I'm Mark Sanders, member of the advisory, head of the, chair of the advisory committee. Rather than go through and repeat a lot of the facts that outlined by Tony, what you have there in your advisory booklet, I thought the point here and my discussion was to take this more like on a, on a, on a theme. I view this as another step forward for the town, picking up on the momentum of the last couple of years of our budgets and the improvement in the town. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone here what's been going on at a global level, federal level, state level over the past four years, been difficult. While some signs of improvement are there, depending on who you talk to and whatever the source is, I think the fact remains that, yes, there are difficult times still ahead. And a lot of the allocations and the items here in the budget are big items, but where are we going? As we've seen, eventually, a lot of the impacts from a macro level, they've worked their way down here, were affected at our, at our city and state budgets from the state level, the monies we receive here, it impacts upon us individually and impacts upon us as taxpayers, and we've seen that reflected in the, in our, in our statements. For the past few years, state funding support that we've come to expect, as Tony mentioned before, relatively flat, I don't think there's anyone promising that that's going to change. Increases can't be predicted or expected. We have several big ticket items still on the budget, pension, healthcare, although there are means and mechanisms today to kind of mitigate some of those expenses, they're still big items, and they will be there despite everything that's being proposed here in the capital budget. So where do we go? I think in the last couple of budget cycles, the town has taken a very proactive approach in managing the challenges in a prudent process through budget preparation and planning, commitments and dedication of all the staff and operational managers at both the school and the municipal side, and to support everybody that's here in town. And I think that precisely is demonstrated as far as support by the town in last year's As a result, today, key financial performance indicators such as our stabilization fund, free cash position, our debt rating remain very strong, and today, we have now a solid foundation upon which to move forward on that. As I see it, the FY thirteen budget, the four articles presented today, tonight, support that continued mission. Some key items in there I'd like to speak to are, one, although I'm going to repeat some of what Tony had mentioned, our schools, all schools, Ford Elementary, Gates, South Shore Vog Tech, High School, continue to deliver us an exceptional product and service, well-staffed due to the override, focused on improving technology use, improving trade skills, and continuing to implement curriculum changes that focus on improving student achievements. Number two, improving our capital infrastructure and operational efficiency gets right to the heart of many of the items in article four. DPW, for instance, is addressing critical needs today, monies that we're putting into roads today that we've all seen, seawalls that we've seen today, water infiltration, Tony mentioned that, expanding sewer capacity to support areas where it's needed in town, either for support purposes or environmental reasons, or they're working together with renewable energy committee in sub-leading us towards a goal of more self-sustaining energy future. The wind turbine is a prime example of the sea spinning, and the upcoming solar array. These are critical items taken today, and now we need to build upon them going forward. Tonight, as Tony mentioned, we'll be discussing the ESCO project. I think this gives us the unique opportunity to partner now with industry experts who can help us improve the efficiency and value of our committed long-term capital assets here in town at both the school and the municipal level. Supporting this project as well are critical support, excuse me, a critical support cast, which includes a facilities manager position whose role it is will be to maintain, assess, and help our town manage its facilities, which at last count is upwards of a hundred and fifty million dollars. Someone needs to help us manage these assets, especially if we're going to take future investments. Along these lines, we'll also be discussing to conduct detailed assessments and studies on those selected town and school buildings for either the renovation or the construction. Also in the town budget that you see here today, I think there's further, proof of further commitment by the town in protecting our natural resources, many of those items which will be addressed in specific articles under the CPC. Also, this budget recognizes the increasing needs of various departments and changes in needs of various other departments, for example, information and technology and veterans' The budget presented to you this evening is well-planned, it's well-thought-out, it's understandable, and it's balanced, which is probably the one you can say for a federal budget. It's also goal-oriented, service-oriented, to support everybody that's here. And again, more than numbers, it's about the school, municipal staff who support and benefit all eighteen thousand members and residents in town. On behalf of the advisory committee, I'd like to thank all the various school and municipal departments and staff for their hard work and dedication this year and next. Special appreciation to some other departments, Council on Aging, Recreation and Beautification provide, in my opinion, a kind of mind-boggling list of services, many done by dedicated volunteers for the benefits of everybody in town at minimal cost. Those are kind of my comments and thoughts regarding articles four and five. In closing, I just wanted to extend a personal thanks to a couple of members on our board, we probably won't get to it later in the meeting, so I'm going to do it now, and I'd like to thank members Bob DiLorenzo and Kevin Dolan, who have served six and three years respectively on this committee. Past two years, Bob was the advisory committee before chairman, excuse me, before I assume this role, and the board is thankful for his leadership and years in leading this, this committee. Also, Gene Martin for serving for upwards of five years as secretary for our committee. Thank you both. So I, I speak for the committee when I'm speaking about our, our two members here that are moving on, but there are other openings and other committees, and, and I guess I wanted to put a plug in and encourage everybody here who's taking an active role in town meeting to participate in one of the committees that may interest them. In the back of every, in the back of our advisory report, there's an application, so if you're ever interested, you refer to that, and it'll give you, give you direction, so I, I encourage everybody there. With that said, thank you again for last year, the support, and hope you enjoy the show.
All right, we're going to go to work on article four, and here's what we're going to do. If you could all turn over to page fifteen of your advisory committee report, you'll be able to follow along. I'm going to ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to make, to read off all the motions for article four, there'll be quite a bit of reading involved, just let him get through that. Once he's done reading that, I am going to go through each of the items listed in the report as A through X, and I will ask people to put holds on any item that they want discussed. Any item that is not held will be voted without further discussion, and then we will return to the held items. Mr. Chairman, you may begin with the motions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate and borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight and any other enabling authority, the following sums of money totaling seven million nine hundred and twenty thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of funding the cost of the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen capital improvement plan submitted in accordance with Section Six dash six of the Situate Home Rule Charter, as provided in the warrant printed in this meeting, and further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sums. Item A, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of the asphalt apron at the fire station headquarters. B, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty thousand dollars for purchase of a defibrillator for the fire department. C, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of forty-five thousand dollars to refurbish the rescue pumper for the fire department. D, I move to appropriate the sum of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to complete Phase Two of the school district technology plan for improvement of networks, operations, workstations, and wireless access, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. E, I move to transfer from free cash the amount of ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of a new school bus for the school department. F, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing carpeting at Hathaway and Cushing Schools. G, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of fifty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a one-ton dump truck for the highway department. H, I move to appropriate the sum of five million nine hundred thousand dollars pursuant to check Massachusetts General Law Chapter Twenty-five for the purpose of entering into a guaranteed energy savings performance contract with a qualified energy service company, ESCO, to improve the energy and efficiency of the town and school buildings, and to further authorize, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. I, I move to transfer the free cash the sum of eighty-nine thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a gang mower for the public grounds department. J, I move to appropriate the sum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of conducting assessments, analysis, design, services, and/or engineering for selected town and school buildings, either for renovation or construction, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. K, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing an asphalt reclamation system for the highway department. L, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of eighty-nine thousand dollars for the purchase of up to three DPW vehicles after completion of an audit determining the appropriate replacement vehicles warranty. M, I move to transfer from the sewer retained earnings the sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of conducting a town's infiltration inflow reduction program. N, I move to transfer from the sewer retained earnings the sum of eighty-two thousand five hundred thousand dollars, let me try that again, eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of the rehabilitation of Sand Hill's pump station. O, I move to transfer from the sewer retained earnings the sum of thirty-two thousand for the purpose of replacing a pickup truck for the sewer department. P, I move to appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars on the purpose of continuing the water department strategic capital plan to replace aged and broken waterman pipes and the, and further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. Q, I move to transfer from water retained earnings the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for ongoing replacement of fire hydrants. R, I move to appropriate the sum of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of purchasing an emergency backup generator at Well Nineteen in the water department, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. S, I move to appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a backhoe for the water department, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. T, I move to appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars from the water retained earnings for the purpose of continuing the town water meter replacement program. U, I move to appropriate the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars from the water retained earnings for the purpose of purchasing a pickup truck for the water department. V, I move to appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the waterways retained earnings for the purpose of funding the first phase of a two-year dredging project under the North and Seastreet Bridge at the mouth of the South River. W, I move to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the waterways retained earnings for the purpose of rehabilitating the South River Launch located on the North and South Rivers. And finally, X, I move to appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the waterways retained earnings for the purpose of purchasing an environmental pump out boat for use by the harbor master.
Seconded by Mr. Murray, does either the Board of Selectmen or the advisory committee have anything further to add by way of recommendation on this? Ms. Carpenter?
Good evening, for the advisory committee, I think it's important just to make a few notes, this is a very daunting list of items that we have before us this year, but the capital planning committee went through a very extensive review, and if you take out the ESCO project for five point nine million dollars, it really narrows down to about two million dollars worth of investment, and you will see that most items are to be funded through free cash or earnings from our retained earnings account. It is the goal of the town to try to pay for as many of these projects with the cash that we have in hand and limit our borrowing and not put any more further stress on our debt service. The capital planning committee reviewed over eight million dollars worth of items, excuse me, just for fiscal thirteen alone, excluding the ESCO project, so that should demonstrate to the town the variety and depth of needs that are required to sustain and improve our infrastructure. It's a long article, so without further ado... It's a long article, so without further ado, the advisory board voted unanimously in support of the entire article and recommends approval of all the motions on the table tonight.
All right, members. Looking at page fifteen of the report, I'll call each letter. If you want a discussion on the item that I call, please say in a loud voice, "Hold", and then we will vote everything that isn't held, and then we'll return to the held items for discussion. A. B. C. D. E. F. G. H. Hold on H. I. J. Hold on J. K. L. M. N. O. P. Q. R. S. T. U. V. W. X. The only items that were held were H and J. All those in favor of acting on the motions made for the unheld items signify by saying "Aye". All those opposed, so voted and declared a unanimous vote. We return now to a discussion of item H, Energy Savings Contract. The person who held it, would you like to come to my gentleman coming up on the right-hand side of the room?
Mr. Moderator, my name is James Hunt, sixty-six Manlot Road. I have a couple of questions, and the form of the questions will depend on the answers to the first couple, so if I might engage in a dialogue with the chairman, with your permission, Mr. Moderator, and through you.
Go ahead, Mr. Moderator.
ESCO is claiming to guarantee a return. I assume that guarantee will be in the form of some surety bond or otherwise. The ESCO is guaranteeing is two million dollars roughly, is that correct?
They guarantee the savings to the utility bills.
Which is listed, which is listed here at two dot zero-nine-one million. Cost of the project is five dot nine million, of which more than half, three dot two million is to be funded from turbine and solar array revenue, neither of which have yet generated any revenue as far as I know. And in Article Three, we dedicated that revenue to the subsidizing of town electricity costs. Is that not a conflict?
They, they're two completely separate entities, completely separate activities. The money that we eventually make, and it's spinning now, so we're making money now, from the solar array and from the windmill, have nothing at all to do with this project. They'll all help us save on our energy bill, but they are not co-made.
Then where is the turbine and solar revenue coming from?
That will come from National Grid.
So that is, in fact, the energy savings?
It will be energy savings in terms of price, but not in terms of usage. What this program will do is actually reduce our usage.
All right.
My name is Al Bangdrich, I'm the director of public works, and...
I recognize you, Mr. Bangdrich.
How do you do?
Go ahead.
The, in the advisory booklet on page twenty-two, that I believe is what you're referring to, yes, the ESCO project, what we did in discussing with the advisory committee was put together a proposed way to fund this. In fact, what happens, the ESCO project will be fully funded by the savings that they will generate. In the, on page twenty-two, where you refer to the energy savings of two million dollars, that's two million dollars just in the first eight years. It's projected there will be a twenty-year savings that will come out of this program, and the capital cost will be spread over that twenty years. So, in earlier discussions, and when this book was printed, it was an idea of combining solar revenue as well as rebates, as well as savings from the project. But the project can be fully funded, and would be fully funded, by the return of the savings from the projects that are put in place. And over the twenty years, that savings is eight-point-seven million dollars. That's not in your booklet, but that's what the ESCO would be guaranteeing us were we to do the five-point-nine million dollars for the projects.
Mr. Moderator, through you, how is the form of that guarantee to be presented?
That's, that's a, a financial guarantee on the bond of, on the company. In fact, I could invite our ESCO partner down to discuss that if you'd like, if the chairman would so choose.
Let's moderator allow. Do you want to have someone else speak?
That, that answers the question, as long as the form of guarantee is better than the one Quincy had with...
Yes, it's a written guarantee, and it's also overseen by the Department of Energy Resources, so we have the state on our side to help with this whole program.
All right, and just to clarify and end the discussion, at least on my part, there is no conflict between this article and Article Three, is that correct?
The article about the revolving funds, yes, that's correct.
There is no conflict.
Correct, there is no conflict.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, there is no one else standing at the mic. Approval of this motion would require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion made by Chairman Vignani signify by saying "Aye". All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. If any seven persons wish to challenge my determination, you may rise and do so now. No one is standing. The next held item was item J. Lady at the center of the mic.
Jen Morrison, sixty Moreton Island Road.
Go ahead, lady.
I did not hold it, but I wanted to get up to speak in support of it. I hope that all of us here tonight would support this part of the capital plan. Everyone here tonight, all residents, students, parents, seniors, basically, everybody in this room will benefit from this. We face several issues as a community with respect to aging facilities and infrastructure. It's critical that we look carefully at where we are today before making any decisions about what we do tomorrow to sustain and evolve the services for all the residents. These decisions will contribute to the future value of our homes, and, more importantly, the quality of life within our community for years to come. As a result, it's in our best interest to have as much information as we can before committing to future plans. Now, this vote doesn't commit us to doing anything as a town now to funding capital improvements. Voting in favor tonight just simply provides funding for the town to do proper research in preparation to inform a comprehensive town-wide facilities plan. This is sorely needed, and it's, you know, just to highlight further and to reiterate what's been said, the senior center was built in nineteen thirty-eight and is horribly inadequate. Police station was built in nineteen fifty-nine. Gates is coming up on its one-hundred-year birthday. Think of the money we're wasting each year to keep these old buildings. Gates alone costs a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year to heat, and that's four times more than any other school in our town. If this item does not pass tonight, it cannot be considered again until the special town meeting this fall. Further delaying efforts to improve a school, a senior center, or any other town facility, we do not want any further delays. Please vote yes to support the three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars from capital planning. Thank you.
Lady to my left.
Deborah Burke, two-oh-two Old Open Bucket Road.
Ma'am.
I did put a hold on this article. I wanted to point out to the meeting that we voted a two-point-two-million-dollar override last year, most of which was supposed to be for the schools. We found out some months later that accidentally, there was actually an extra four-to-five-hundred-thousand that you guys didn't need, but you decided that you wouldn't give it back to us, you'd offer us a hundred-and-fifty-thousand out of that, okay? So I'm wondering really what's going on with the budgeting process, and now you want us to spend almost a hundred thousand dollars on a study, not on actually fixing anything. I have no issues with replacing the gate school, fixing the gate school. This article is not about the gate school. This article is about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar study of town facilities, and I feel that that's an awful lot of money to spend on a bunch of consultants. There's a lot of contractors in town who'd be happy to do some work on the buildings, would probably be willing to give you estimates for free, I don't know. I just think it's a lot of money to spend on another study. Thank you.
Scott Greenbaum, forty Damon Road. I support the idea of studying our buildings, but this study is predicated on placing a middle school where Town Hall and Police Station is. This town spent some money two years ago having the resource delineation of the pond in front yard of the school here, and it's found the aural pool. Unfortunately, that makes it very difficult to do this work, and I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. So therefore, if the premises wrong of the plan, then we probably should be reviewing whether we should be spending money on the plan. The other thing is, there's talk about putting the police and fire station up in North situate. Most police and fire stations are in the center of town, which is here. So, if the premise of the study is flawed, then the study will be flawed, and therefore, it will not be a good spending of our money. We do need to have a study, and we do need to start out with the right footing before we go ahead with it, and consider all our facts, especially the facts that we've already spent money for consultants to find for us. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman at the center of the mic, then Mr. Vignani.
Hi, Mark Missel, twenty-eight Cap'n in Wichita-Lay-Zhino. Questioned by my first, Mr. Moderator, the buildings to be studied include a vast array of the fifty buildings we own, is that correct? You know how many buildings it would be in the study?
Go ahead, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Can you tell us how many would be in the study?
Oh, how many, I'm sorry. Well, we're going to look at all of the different departments in the town. I mean, the thought of moving to Gates is that there's a lot more space there than there is in Town Hall. So what it gives us the opportunity is to centralize a lot of the departments that are outlined. I don't know what they are. I mean, clearly, you have to do a study to find the answers. You just can't hire a builder to go build a middle school. You know, somebody has to go in, and they're not going to give us a hit list back that says, you know, hire somebody else to do this. They're going to give us concrete answers that says, if you want to put a school in this campus, it has to go here, because the parking requirements are here, the setbacks are here, this is there, and we're actually going to get a plan. In terms of how many buildings, I don't know, but there's certainly operations in the high school that could be moved to, recreation could move to Gates along with the rest of the departments, the water department could move, the DPW departments could move, the highway department, council on aging could be considered, a library could be considered. I mean, any one of the outside departments that are outside of Town Hall right now will be considered as soon as we figure out what the footprint and the capacity of Gates will be to go into that facility.
Great, thank you. And the follow-on comment would just be that, when I look around, we've got fifty-plus buildings in the, in the town, and I think it would be great for us to have kind of a more comprehensive master plan. I think in the last couple of years, we've done these WPA buildings, we've talked about year forty-four, we talked about the senior center, we talked about schools. So I'm very supportive of getting our arms around the bigger picture, so we can look at a prioritized list, rather than thinking about the one-off situation, as mentioned earlier, or emergency repairs. I think if you put it into the context of your own home, you know, if you do an addition, you build the driveway, what do you do first, where's it come from? So I encourage us to go forward with the, with the proposal to get that plan in place. There's probably some buildings that don't need to be around, we could look at moving those around, and I just feel better having a plan in place, so I urge everyone to support the plan to figure out what we do next, and look forward to a year from now we have some concrete initiatives in place to vote on. Thank you.
There being no one else at the mic, action on this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion as made signify by saying "Aye". All those opposed, so voted, declared a two-thirds vote. If any seven people challenge my determination, please rise and do so now. No one is rising, the vote is confirmed, it passes by a two-thirds vote. Article Five. What we'll do on this motion is we'll allow Mr. Vignani to make the main motion, we'll get the advisory committee recommendation, and then, as we do each year, we will go through the budget and ask for holds on different departmental line items. And if you turn to pages twenty-four through twenty-eight in your advising, advisory committee report, you'll be able to follow along. Mr. Vignani.
Great. Before I jump into that, just a quick comment on the budget. I want to thank, I want to thank the town administrator and all the department heads for presenting all the volumes of data that they did to us and to the advisory committee. The town administrator has a very challenging role in the budget process to maintain the current level of services while also trying to implement the strategic plans and the priorities of the board. In most cases, she has to make cuts in some areas to make money available in other areas. Obviously, this is all within the confines of the general budget. She's given a number that she has to make, and has to make it work, just like the school department does over there. This number comes from the forecasting committee and the town administrator. It's not an easy task. This year, I'm happy to say that the level of services are being kept at the same level. There's some increases and decreases, but overall, the level of service will stay the same for the town. There are five items that I want to just mention very quickly that stood out to me. The first one is under veteran services. With the added, with the addition of our veterans agent, Donald Matt, over here, and the advisory council, I see a lot of the members out in the crowd here, we expect our funding for our benefits, for the veterans to increase, and it's, it'll increase the budget there. Our police department went up, and that's because we're adding two police officers to the force. Our DP, uh, our DP, the DPW department budget increased, and that's due to the increase of fuel, some additional equipment, but the majority of it is the addition of a facilities manager. The town, as we've mentioned earlier, has fifty-five buildings with a total value over a hundred-and-fifty-million dollars. You add the ESCO projects to it, they just passed, you add the restructuring of the buildings that we just passed, you add the green projects that we're working on, and then you just look at the age and the condition of our current buildings, and you see that there's quite a lot of work to be done in that area, and it's not something that you can just pile on somebody else in the DPW department. This is a top priority of the town administrator. She has the support of the board of selectmen and the advisory committee, and it is a necessity in order for us to be successful with the two items that you just passed. The last thing that I'll mention are the shared expenses, I mentioned those earlier, they went up, set, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, insurance went up, retirement went up, other pension employee benefits went up, and we had an increase in attendance at Cecil's Road Tech in that one. So that's the, the general summary of the budget. I'll now make a motion. Move the town raise and appropriate fifty-seven million five-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, and transfer from the golf enterprise fund the sum of forty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, and from the wastewater enterprise, the sum of a hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, and from the water department enterprise, the sum of two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, and from the transfer station enterprise, the sum of a hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, and from the waterways enterprise, the sum of ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, and from the title five assessments, the sum of six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, and from the debt premium reserve, the fund of, the sum of eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, and from the peg access cable grant, the sum of seventy-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars to the general fund, and the sum of fifty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars from the Massachusetts... the fund of, the sum of $11,437, and from the PEG access cable grant, the sum of $74,322 to the general fund, and the sum of $54,472 from the Massachusetts School Building Assistant Reserve totaling $58,372,100, and for the purpose of funding personal services and expenses for town operations and as may be necessary for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2012, as printed in the advisory booklet.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, we've already had it from Board of Selectmen, from the advisory committee. Mr. Sandman, if you have any comments you wish to add.
I don't have any other further comments to add, other than the opening remarks made earlier. I think many of you were flipping through some of the notes that Tony was going through a lot in the motion. Those were items that reused our enterprise fund indirects costs that he was going through that offset the number. So the differences that you see, it ultimately totals up, but Tony was going through a lot of numbers which ultimately lead to the number you have in your advisory booklet. So the motion was a little bit longer than what we have in the booklet there. The advisory committee recommends approval of this motion.
All right, starting on the excellently clear advisory committee booklet on page 24, I'll go through the headline item account numbers. If you want to discuss an item, please say in a loud, clear voice, hold, and we will return to that item for discussion. Anything that is not held will be voted, and then we'll return for the held items. Okay. Starting at line 122, Board of Selectmen. Did I hear a hold? Yes, no? I'm calling out a no. Line 123, Town Administrator. I heard a hold. Line 131, Advisory Committee. Line 132, Reserve Fund. Line 135, Town Accountant. Line 141, Assessors. Line 145, Treasurer Collector. Line 149, Administration. Line 155, Information Technology. Line 158, Tax Foreclosures. Line 159, Cable Television. Line 161, Town Clerk. Line 171, Conservation. Line 175, Lining Board. Line 176, Zoning Board of Appeals. Line 192, Property Liability Insurance. Line 210, Police. Line 220, Fire. Line 241, Inspections. Line 292, Animal Shelter. Line 295, Shelfage. Line 300, School Committee. Line 310, South Shore Regional School. Line 400, Public Works. Did I hear a hold?
Hold.
Okay, if you're gonna say hold, please say it nice and loud. It's hard to hear in here, that's why. Okay, so I heard a hold on Public Works. Line 423, Snow and Ice. Line 424, Street Lights and Beacons. Line 510, Board of Health. Line 541, Council on Aging. Line 543, Veterans Benefits Services. Line 549, Commission on Disabilities. Line 610, Library. Line 630, Recreation. Line 650, Beautification. Line 691, Historical Buildings. Line 720, Debt and Interest. Line 910, Non-Contributory Pensions. Line 911, Plymouth County Retirement. Line 912, Workers' Compensation. Line 913, Unemployment Insurance. Line 914, Contributory Group Insurance. Line 916, and I wanna get a look at the person who holds this one, federal taxes. And that's it. So, we have hold on line 123, Town Administrator, and Public Works, line 400. Did I miss anything? All right. All those in favor of approving the non-held item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Returning now to line 123, who do we have? Ma'am.
Lauren Thaxler, 175, Old Open Bucket. This was more of a question, and looking at some of the budget materials that were prepared earlier on and the proposed budget, it looked like there was a significant increase from $345,000 to $420,000. Additionally, looking back at prior years, this budget has gone from 210, sorry, in 2010, it was $224,000. Last year, it was $360,000, and now it's $420,000. And I just wanted to get a better understanding of the reason for that increase. It's probably the only line item I've seen that's increased almost double over those two years.
On question, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The reason why some of the years have changed is because we've reclassed expenses going into different accounts. That's somewhat of it. The reason why the recent increases in the light item that jumped up from $80,000 to $160,000, that is the funds available for the fire unit contract COLI increase. So those are being accrued there as we wait for the final decision on that contract settlement.
If I could just make one comment, I think for those of us looking at the budget, it would be helpful on the forecast to go back more than just the prior year. I personally find it helpful not only to be looking at 2012 and 13, but also a little further backwards as well. Thank you.
There being no one else at the mics, all those in favor of line 123, Town Administrator as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority. Return now to line item 400. Is that Miss Strode I see over there?
Oh, you recognize me, okay.
Lady to my right.
Need a strode, white on a way. A year ago, I talked about this item, so I'm gonna talk about it again, and it was voted down. I will have a question once I make my comment. My question, from my request, would be, the selectmen all supported this article, the advisory committee all supported the article, with the exception of one, my question would be, who was not in favor of this article this time? The other question, or I would expect that each of the selectmen would discuss why they voted in favor of this article, as would the advisory committee members, because last year, the taxpaying citizens voted against this article. My question would be, weren't you all this mean put the taxpayer's sin, and now you're back again? This was voted no, as I said a year ago. Three months after town meeting, the DPW director and one of his employees paid a visit to the advisory committee requesting this position again, three months after we voted The town charter, pardon me, states that the town administrator shall have full jurisdiction over the rental and use of town facilities except schools. The town administrator shall keep a full and complete inventory of all property of the town, both real and personal. The bylaws state, under 20300, Town Administrator, he, well, this has changed now, but it's six states, he shall be responsible for the maintenance and repair of all public buildings except schools and historical sites. He shall be responsible for the maintenance of school grounds and public lands. If there is a new facility manager appointed, I believe we're gonna have to change the town charter, because the charter specifically states that the town administrator oversees this. I do recall last year, Anthony Antonelli voted against this on the advisory committee, and he stated at that time, that was their department, he did that for 32 years, and he voted, that's why he had voted against. I would like to start and ask who in the advisory committee this year was not in favor of this?
Well, hold on. I heard two different groups of questions there. One, a legal question about whether it's lawful to set up this position, and I'm going to ask Tom Council to address that, and then if individual officials wish to explain how and why they voted, I'll let them do that, and you have one minute left. So, Council?
Excuse me, my one minute means when I'm talking, not when anyone's responding, right?
Well, I guess that's gonna be for the moderator to figure out, but I agree with you this time. So, yes?
James Stumey, Town Council. The speaker is correct that the administrator has responsibility for town buildings, but that does not address how the appropriations are organized or how the various personnel are put into various departments. So the budgetary appropriation could be in any of the areas that are ultimately under the town administrator, and there's no legal requirement that the budget be organized to have each of those positions in her lineup.
All right, and now to the officials, the chairman's closest to the mic. He can start. If any other official wishes to say something briefly, I'll recognize you. Mr. Chairman.
Let me start by answering the question where you insinuated that the selectmen weren't following the lead of the prior meeting.
Rather, we didn't use words like insinuate. Let's just keep it.
I didn't insinuate.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm not recognizing you. Mr. Vignani would be more careful. Go ahead.
Last, at the special town meeting when we discussed this item, it was for additional funding. We were looking for extra money to be spent and added to the budget so that we could start this position six months earlier than we want to right now. In order to fund this position right now, it's incorporated in the normal budget process as every other personnel person in the town is, and it's just another component of the budget. So there's a big difference between what we went for in the special town meeting and what's there now. I explained earlier, this is probably the most critical position that we're gonna have moving forward if we expect a success on the projects that we just passed. And I think that was my sense and why this is important, and the town administrator has many roles in this town. She's the chief financial officer, but she doesn't cut the checks. She's the chief procurement officer, but she doesn't fill out every PO. You know, she is in charge of inventory, all the assets in the town, but she's not the one that maintains them all. So that's, that's, and I'll respond to that part of the question. Was there something else I missed?
No, that's fine. You were ready to go, so ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Susan Daley, the newest member to the advisory committee, and I was actually the dissenting vote on the overall article, but not for that specific item that you're discussing. My concerns, although I have to say, as a first-year member, I've been overwhelmed and extremely impressed by all the work and the knowledge and expertise by our town officials. That being said, I did have some general concerns about the municipal planning process, and while great strides have been taken, I do believe that there are, that we could be doing more to affect the types of economic changes that we need to make our town and community more prosperous, and frankly, I think the facilities manager is a position that we need, because things have sort of fallen awry, we've been a little bit complacent to some extent, and I think now we have an opportunity, we have a great team, I think, in place to move forward, and I think we have to move our town forward. Thank you.
Mr. Norton. And this is all in response to Ms. Strode's request for comment about people's feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is true that last year, last fall, we did come forward with this position, facilities manager, and Town Meeting in its wisdom voted it down. I don't think I've ever served in a board that had more respect for Town Meeting than this board I want right now. We respect Town Meeting, we understand Town Meeting. Over the years, as I look back, although I did not agree with Town Meeting at some times, and Town Meeting didn't agree with me, the majority of the time, Town Meeting was correct. This is coming back tonight for a very, very good reason. Chairman Vignani stated, and he's absolutely correct, that this is one of the most important positions that we've ever attempted to put before Town Meeting. We just voted potentially $9 million over the past years to improve school buildings and town buildings, which anyone who has any contact with those buildings knows it conditionally. We absolutely, positively need someone to oversee these projects. It is probably, and I'll repeat what Mr. Vignani said, the most important position that we'll fill, not only this year, but years to come. This position was funded, the town administrator worked diligently in the past six months to find money to count other positions in town, not to fill positions in town, so she would have enough money, as she recognized, to have enough money to fill this very important position. Thinking back, I know that we've made some very important decisions in this town, but this, believe me, is one of the, one of the big ones. I urge you to vote for this position. We need it desperately. Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I just jotted down a few notes while the question was being asked. I think someone mentioned it earlier. First of all, it's 55 buildings. That's an awful lot of buildings. Secondly, not that I care what's happening in other towns, but other towns are putting this, are filling this position, all right? But more importantly, since it was first talked about a year or so ago, I just really believe that if the right person is put in this position, they will more than pay for themselves. For example, when we do construction jobs on schools and municipal buildings, that they, and there are change orders in place, this person could be in that position to prevent that from happening. Or if changes were made to make these buildings more efficient, like Joe just said, the savings alone will more than pay for themselves, pay for that person's salary.
Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I voted in favor of this as well, and I think it's an extremely important position. A couple things, just to reassure people in the audience, and in fact, Ms. Strode for bringing up this point, but budgets were rearranged within the town side of things to make, or to find the money for this position. It reminds me of how last year, or maybe two years ago, I stood before you, and we asked for the position of the IT manager. And through the excellent financial leadership of the town administrator, we were able to take money from various other budgets where that purpose was redistributed, and we brought it under one position, and now we have excellent IT manager running all that show. And so this is very similar to that, in that money was taken from this department, that department, and so on, where it was all done piecemeal, and now with this important position hopefully being filled, it's going to make things much more centralized and that much more efficient. I would also like to hold up one graph, and I recognize you can't see this even in the front row, but hopefully you can see the curve, and if I will, if I may, on the left is fiscal year 09, and on the right is fiscal year 13, and everybody can see this line going down. And this is the number of FTE on the Town Hall side. And this is the number of FTE on the town hall side of things. And this decrease from FY09 to FY13, which includes the Facilities Manager, is a decrease in FTEs of thirteen. So Town Hall on the municipal side is not getting bloated. We are not adding increased personnel and just expanding continually. We are operating with fewer people than we have over the last five years. We have fewer people, and we have more buildings, and we have more projects. I urge you all, please, to support this critically important position. Thank you.
Mr. Dan?
Good evening, folks. I'm welcome. Thank you for coming to Town Meeting. Ms. Strode, I have to tell you, that's the first question that I've seen, offered or asked at Town Meeting, where every selectman has gotten up to say something about it. So I commend you on your question. I think it's very good.
You're welcome.
I have to tell you, Mr. Harris just asked me, "Do you have anything more to add?" The answer is yes. Fifty-five buildings is what Mr. Harris had said. Fifty-five buildings is what this town has. A furnace in each one, roof for each one, public, or the plumbing, toilets in all of them, and air conditioning in most of them, if need be. Some of them don't, but a lot of them do have it. You have steps, access, both regular steps as well as disabilities, to be able to have handicap ramps. You've got driveways, you've got parking lots, playground equipment in some of the facilities, like the schools, as well as some of our parks. Recently, I was at a school where one of the slides at the bottom, right at the bottom, had been broken. Had any kid gone down it, which they were going, could have easily sheared, if you will, their backside. It was taped, duct taped. A Facilities Manager person would be taking care of this situation. A phone call would go to go from there. You have windows that are broken. Glass that's broken. Recently, I was at Lawson Tower, needed to be replaced. One of the triangular glass, actually diamond glass in the front door needed to be replaced. Who's going to fix that? Insulation needs to be dealt with in some of these buildings. Believe it or not, toilet paper, paper towels. Who's going to handle all this for these buildings? Town Administrator? Is that what you'd like to have her spend her time doing? Carpet needs to be replaced. Rooms need to be painted. Lights, speakers, just like this. You have snow plowing, cleaning off the walkways. You have damage from storms or from vandalism, graffiti. You have water fountains that are broken, like Town Hall, which was broken for a number of years and recently fixed. Chairs and other items. As I said to you, the Town Administrator has a lot of duties. So you might say, "Well, should she be going around having to fix fifty-five buildings, trying to fix it? Do you want the head of the DPW doing that? Who's going to take care of the engineering? Who's going to take care of the sewage? All the engineering with all the new priorities that we're doing up in the mining area? And squash the pine? The Water Department, we have problems with our water pipes breaking. Do you want the Building Department, or the DPW Director having to fix these buildings and delay the water breakage? Because that's what his job's supposed to be doing? You've got snow, you've got roads and sidewalks with the DPW. Or do you want to turn around and say, "Well, we want the Building Enforcement to do it"? I mean, logistically, I know what's going on about this, but think about it. I have a house and I have an office. When something breaks down, it sidelines me for my job. And that's the reason why we need a Facilities Manager. A person who's going to be responsible for the fifty-five buildings that we have. A person who's not only going to be dealing with the old buildings and the buildings that we have presently, but going forward with anything that we're looking to do to try to streamline and make things more efficient. That person, he or she, can take a look and say, "What are you talking about putting in that type of glass? We need this type. We need something that's going to be more green, something more efficient." So that's the reason why I voted for it. And that's the reason why I suggested and supported it last year. And I would do it again, because you know what? I know myself, I don't have the time. I don't have the expertise. And the person that we need in this town for all these buildings is somebody who understands what is needing to maintain these buildings. We have a budget of over fifty-eight million dollars. Companies have a Facilities Person. You can go to a condo association with a number of buildings. They have a manager, a company that manages these buildings, and that people don't have to worry about that. So given the times, and given our viewpoint on the board, that's the reason why we're supportive of it. And so I ask you tonight to also support it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Strode, you have one minute.
Well, I still didn't have the question answered as to, pardon me. The vote was no a year ago. We had fifty-five buildings a year ago. The article was presented by the Town Administrator. This year, we still have fifty-five buildings. And as I said, three months after our special town meeting, pardon me, DPW was at the Advisory Committee, getting their support, which obviously they did. The buildings didn't change, and I just wonder, again, going back to, the taxpayers voted no last year. And I appreciate all of your dialogue on selectmen. Thank you. But facts are facts. It was voted no, fifty-five buildings. And then it changed from the Town Administrator.
Ten seconds.
Bringing this article, pardon me, to the DPW. I would suggest vote no. No was last year from the taxpayers. It's the same this year. More has been added, pardon me. It's our money was two-point-two million override.
Time wasted.
Vote no.
A piffy sound. Ladies and gentlemen?
Elizabeth McGowan, 25 Park Avenue. I would like to reiterate what the woman at the other mic said. This was brought up last year. And I feel that this time, it was pushed in to a budget so that it would just automatically be passed. I think we should listen to all of her concerns. I think that there was an agenda, and I think that we were trying to be misled. Thank you.
There being no one else at the mics, we're ready for the question. All those in favor of line 400, as presented in the budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a majority passed. Twenty-seven people wish to challenge that determination. Please rise if you so know. That's one. Two, three. You're not rising, you're raising your hand. Five, six. Oh, there's a whole bunch of them. I see. All right, will the tellers please take your questions? All right, what I'll do is I'll call for, come on, let's come to order. I will call for affirmative and negative votes. You have a voting card. When I call for your vote, please hold your card up nice and high so that the tellers can see it. All those in favor of line item 400, public works as presented by Selectman, Chairman Vignani's motion, please raise your voting card to be counted now. Are we all set? Okay, thank you. You may put your hands down. Right rear bleacher, Chris? Right rear bleacher, twenty-three?
Thirty-eight.
All right, thirty-eight. Right front bleacher, Penny? Thank you. Right front bleacher, twenty-four? Right rear floor, Ron? Okay. Right rear ble, right rear floor, twenty-three? Right center floor, Heather?
One-seven, seventeen.
Seventeen, right center floor. Right front floor, including the Advisory Committee and School Committee, Frank? Twenty-two-zero. Left rear bleacher, Peter?
Nineteen.
One-nine?
One-nine.
One-nine. Left front bleacher, that's George? All right. Left front bleacher?
It's Peter, and it's ten.
Ten, one-zero, sorry. Left rear floor?
Thirty-four, three-four.
Three-four, thank you, George. Left center floor?
Twenty-two, two-two.
Two-two. Left front floor includes the moderator, I don't vote, clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
One-seven, seventeen.
One-seven, thank you, Rich. All right, all those opposed to the motion made under line item 400, please raise your voting cards now. Okay, you can put your hands down. Thank you. Right rear bleacher?
Nine?
Nine. Right front bleacher? Six. Right rear floor? One-two, twelve. Right center floor?
Eight.
Eight. Right front floor, including Advisory Committee and School Committee? Five. Left rear bleacher?
Six.
Six. Left front bleacher? Two. Two. Left rear floor?
Five.
Five. Left center floor?
Thirteen.
One-three. Left front floor includes moderator, clerk, selectmen, and registrars?
Zero.
Zero. By a vote of two-hundred-and-twenty-four in favor and sixty-six against, the motion carries. Madam Administrator, is there any other business to be done under the budget article? We're all set? Okay. Before we go to Article Six, on behalf of myself and the meeting members, I'd like to present these roses to our town clerk, Bernice Brown, and thank her for the many years of service she's given.
Just once again, let me say thank you, Karen.
I've just been asked to remind people that if you leave, you vote with your feet. But someone who's still here could always vote to reconsider. Article Six, precision of authorized but unissued debt to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move the town rescind the balance of the loans authorized and unissued by prior annual and special town meeting authorizations pursuant to the following articles and approvals. Waste water treatment plant upgrade, the amount is fifteen thousand, one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. From the annual town meeting of nineteen ninety-seven, Article 4F, the remaining balance unused is a hundred dollars. A fire station at one-thirty-six Manlock Road and Lot fourteen dash one dash fifty-eight Haveli Road, the amount of two million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from two thousand annual town meeting, Article 11. Two thousand and one November special town meeting, Article 2. Again, the balance unissued is two million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Sewer extension design and construction, amount was thirteen million, five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars from the two thousand and two annual town meeting from Article 4K, balance unused is nine-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. Renovation of schools of the amount of three million dollars from the nineteen ninety-eight November special town meeting, Article 8, and the two thousand February special town meeting, Article 1, balance unused, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. The new senior center at seventy-five Branch Street, one-point-nine million dollars. Two thousand and four special annual town meeting, Article 5, balance unissued, one-point-nine million dollars. Marine Park Design and Construction, the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars issued at the two thousand and five October special town meeting, Article 14, balance unissued is seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And school vehicles, amount authorized a hundred and five thousand from the two thousand and seven annual town meeting, Article 4.3, balance unissued is eighteen thousand dollars.
Sir, second, second of Mr. Harris. Discussion, Mr. Dan?
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. This article would rescind prior town meeting authorizations for projects that either were, one, never came to fruition, or, two, have unexpended balance after completion that we can close out. In the case of the school vehicle authorization, as we noted above, we are endeavoring to pay these funds with cash going forward, as opposed to trying to do it through authorization. Two items, the construction of the fire station and the senior center, have town meeting authorizations that are specific to the site. And what I mean by that, to seventy-five Branch Street as well as to Haveli Road. Theoretically, Town Meeting could change this authorization or amend it to another locale, another location. But at this point, the Board of Selectmen feel the better course is to rescind the outstanding amount. The Marine Park project is completed, and no additional funds are needed. This is one of the projects that actually came in under budget, plus, more importantly, we were able to get grants. Consequently, we're looking to rescind that amount that's left over, that we haven't, while it's being authorized, we haven't used. As we move forward, we will request borrowing authorizations that are more generic, as opposed to being specific. What do I mean by that? In other words, instead of specifically saying, "We're going to put it at this site, at this location," we'll keep it more general so that those funds can be used at other sites in the event that those particular intentions, those projects, don't get built, like the senior center, like the fire station. And finally, and I think this is probably the most key component, this authorization debt is seen by rating agencies, okay, as something that can be floated in a bond at any time. So when we get assessed, valued, or rated, they look at what you can potentially spend, and then they rate it, and they give us a rating. This can hinder us moving forward with new projects. And I always suggest that if you take it from a credit perspective, if you're given one credit card, no problem, you're given a credit limit. But if you have five or ten, and you try to get something else in credit, people are going to look at that and say, "I'm sorry, you already have so much credit available to you, we can't give you because you're a risk." Cleaning up these new authorizations will improve our overall debt picture and keep us moving in the right direction for good fiscal management. Thank you.
From the advisory committee, Mr. DeLorenzo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, we believe that in the spirit of, uh, cleaning up the books, that this is very, very good, uh, fiscal management, and the advisory committee was unanimous in their support of this motion.
Gentleman to my right.
Pete Toppin, twenty-six Glad Road. I agree with cleaning up the articles, believe me, that's fine. I've never understood, and I'm asking a simple question, what happened to the firehouse on Manlock Road? Did we run into a legal problem, or what?
Mr. Danek.
It didn't pass the override. The override in two thousand and seven, when we were trying to authorize it, it didn't pass. It's that simple.
Lady to my right.
Anne Burbine, ten Penny Chris Road. And yes, I, like Mr. Toppin, understand that we need to clean up the articles. But my concern is we do need another fire station. And, you know, I, the override in oh-seven, actually, there was a lawsuit as far as Haveli Road is concerned, and there was a lawsuit concerning the corner of three-A and Manlock Road. So those things sort of got pushed off, pushed off, pushed off. And the same thing could be said for the senior center. And we need, and, again, you're cleaning up these articles, and that's fine, but we also need to know that this town truly supports its seniors and its fire department, public safety. So somehow, some way, we need to know that we will go forward for a new senior center or some facility for our seniors, and also for another fire station in North Situate. I know it's part of the major plan, but if the major plan does not come to fruition, we need to change things, and we need to move forward. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Ellen Bernardi, um, six-one-six Haveli Road. I wanted to speak as well to the senior center, and I'd like to just make a couple of comments and then, um, uh, mention what I was liking to propose. The seniors, um, in this town, I feel, have been more of a quiet, and I would say, almost majority. This is the fastest-growing population, not only in Situate, but everywhere across the country. At present, we have forty-three-hundred-and-forty-four seniors in Situate, which make up about twenty-four percent of our population here. Seventy percent of them have lived in their homes for a number of years, and they pay taxes, and have been paying taxes. The senior center that we all know now has, is in a building that is old, like the other fifty-four buildings that are in town. By viewing and going through the senior center, there is mold, mildew, inadequate heat, um, and certainly space. Recently, a wonderful, um, uh, March seventeenth luncheon was, was done. Forty-two people attended, and forty-five people were on the wait list. That's forty-five people that sat in their homes because we couldn't fit them into the senior center. The Gerontology Society of America, the Association of Older Americans, and the Beverly Foundation, which is three well-known, um, communities, all talk about aging in place. The best thing for our seniors is to age where they want to age. And we have so many two-income families, where a member of the family is not home during the day with the senior that may be aging. By having a viable senior center, those problem of, uh, having a place for seniors instead of being isolated would be addressed. And I think it's important that, as I look around and I see a good proportion of the people here are in my age bracket of being considered a senior, but also fifty-year-olds and even some forty-year-olds, as you look ahead, this is being proactive, because this is going to take care of you as time goes on. And it will be a source of not only a building, which certainly we need buildings here, but it is going to improve the quality of life of so many of our population and our growing population. I, I would like to propose that the one-point-nine million dollars that is stated for forty-five Branch Street be kept in the budget, in the town's money, with the option that we take out the address. I think that the voters of town meeting back in two thousand and four...
All right, um, uh, thirty seconds, and if that's a motion to amend the article, I will accept an amendment to delete the reference to the one-point-nine. Uh, in the cleanup, I will not accept an amendment to change the address because that's beyond the scope of the article.
Okay.
We're not addressing the merits of whether there should or shouldn't be a senior center, but just simply whether this should be taken off the books or not.
Okay, and I would say, I would like to at least stay in the books so that the Board of Directors of the, um, Council on Aging and volunteers can move forward to utilize this money, to find a facility, maybe something that's already here, and move our seniors who have been waiting since two thousand and four...
Okay, time, I'm sorry, time please.
Okay.
Uh, that's a motion to amend Article Six as moved by deleting the reference to the new senior center, one-point-nine million dollars. Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment to delete the one-point-nine million dollars. Uh, council is questioning whether the amendment is within the scope of the article. Uh, I'm ruling that it is within the scope of the article, uh, and here's the reasoning. You have seven different items, which the Board of Selectmen is seeking to take off of the books as authorizing indebtedness. The effect of the motion would be to remove the senior center money from the list of things to be deleted from the previous authorizations. A, uh, yes vote on, uh, this motion does not build a senior center, it does not change the address of the senior center, all it does is leaves the one-point-nine million dollars on the books. A no vote on the amendment, uh, would preserve the motion so that the one-point-nine million dollars would come off the books if the motion as originally made was approved. And for those reasons, I am ruling this within the scope of the article. Now, uh, discussion on, um, the motion.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Folks, you can do that, that's up to you. But, you know, I think it was alluded to earlier by Chairman Avignani, the Board of Selectmen along with the town administrator, we're looking long-term now. We have a strategic plan that we're looking and employ, and beginning to, um, put into work. That's the reason why under Article, uh, Four-J, we ask for the appropriation of about three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, to look forward. As a part of that, it's a part, we're looking at senior center, or what I'd like to say is more of a community center. You, Ellen is absolutely right. The senior center is an abomination, it is awful. It's a building that was built in eighteen forty, because it was a schoolhouse, then it was modified into a fire station. And if anybody here has yet to go down to see the senior center, then you should. It's your town building, it's your senior center, it's awful. But, we need to have a plan going forward for a better senior center or a community center, and the Board of Selectmen are looking at Gates as the panacea for that situation. To be able to have a community where not only seniors can go, but more of a recreation, more of a town hall, something more lively, something that's gonna be accessible, parking, and this is part of the grand plan. In addition to that, the Affordable Housing Trust, in conjunction with the Situate Housing Authority and Council on Aging, are looking at an alternative on the Driftway, the twelve acres. There'll be a meeting on Wednesday night to begin to discuss that in the event that our strategic plan fails. Either way you cut it, we need more than one-point-nine million for a senior center. And if you've seen any other senior centers, and I have, Orleans, East Long Meadow, I've been to Duxbury, I've seen other ones that are phenomenal facilities, it's a shame to have the one we have, but the one-point-nine is not gonna do it. And all it's going to do is hinder our ability going forward for ratings, for trying to accomplish what we're looking to do. So, I would implore you to continue with what the Board of Selectmen along with the town administrator and the advisory committee unanimously has suggested to you all. But, if you don't want to do that, that's fine, at some point, that's gonna have to be erased, because we're gonna come back, and we're gonna say we're gonna need money, and it's gonna be a lot more than one-point-nine, and it will be earmarked for the, um, senior center. As to the fire, that too is part of our strategic plan. It failed two thousand and seven because of the override, and the people in North Situate, as well as the people in the West End, deserve a fire station that is gonna be closer, and our plan is to put something along three-A. And I think some people suggested, suggested that we're gonna lose central fire, it won't be centralized.
Just with respect, I think a discussion of the fire station situation is beyond the scope of the amendment.
Fair enough. So again, I just ask you to support both your advisory as well as your Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Thank you, I'd just like to, my name is Betty Johnson, I'm forty, Ellen Place, I'd like to reiterate what Ellen said, I don't want to see the money go away, I don't want to see it disappear. I'm, I don't think that the voters in two thousand and four wanted that only if it could be at Branch Street. I think people in, the seniors in Situate deserve more than one room, two toilets, and no parking. Um, the seniors in Situate are going to surrounding towns where there are adequate and beautiful senior centers, but what's gonna happen when those people shut their doors to out-of-town rooms? Recently, I was told about a program in Hingham that sounded really interesting, but they don't know you can't go there because they're closing that to people that aren't from Hingham. What's gonna happen when the other surrounding towns start closing their doors to Situate people? And if I could just have people think for one minute before you leave tonight, what are we showing and teaching our young people by the way we're looking after our elders? That's all, thank you.
Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Ade Summer, it's two Merkys Lane. Uh, I agree very much with what Ellen has said, we have more seniors who are going to be turning eighty-five years old in this town, not only in every part of the world, and we do need a senior center. And I want to know what's going to happen if you take that money out, how are they gonna get it back in? How are they gonna get it and use it when they need it, when they make some decisions? I think it's not possible to take it out and not get it back. Thank you.
Gentleman with the sound of mic.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Jamie Gilmore, seven-thirty-five First Parish Road. Uh, I'm in support of the senior center, and, um, from my opinion of, uh, listening to everybody here, I don't think there's anybody in this room that is not in support of upgrading a senior center to something that's habitable, decent, functional, and hopefully will serve me when I finally get old.
When?
When, when I finally get old, thank you. The, uh, careful, the, uh, the exercise that I see here is an exercise of good accounting practice and bookkeeping. I don't think to lose this one-point-nine million dollar item, uh, is gonna affect how we go forward to build a great senior center in the grand scheme and grand plan. We spent a lot of time earlier tonight, and I know I'm talking a little bit off-topic, but a lot of time earlier tonight, setting a course for really doing something in a non-peacemeal way. I think the one-point-nine million dollars, although noble and audible, and laudable, was a, was a piecemeal type of method. We have to stop the piecemeal concept, we have to support the master plan, the three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that was already promoted to create that plan, and we have to do it in harmony with the future. I want to see a senior center, but to leave one-point-nine million and affect our reading is, just doesn't make sense right now, because we're not gonna build it tomorrow. Thank you.
Briefly, Mr. Danek.
You know, I, I want to make sure we're clear here, I think we're having a violent agreement in that the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator agree. You're preaching to the choir, we need a new senior center. The authorization in two thousand and seven, which was three-point-five million, and it failed for the specific site at seventy-five Branch Street, the authorization, while it's one-point-nine, is not gonna get us a new senior center on what was proposed, and that's the reason why we're looking at a strategic plan going forward, saying, when we come back, we're not gonna be looking for one-point-nine, we're gonna be looking for a lot larger number, but it's going to be the panacea for, uh, multiple issues and ills that the town has had for a number of years. So, I don't want to make sure we're clear here, the Board isn't just saying, let's erase it and walk away from it, the Board is saying, we need more money, and at some point in the future, presumably next year or shortly thereafter, we're coming back and saying, this is what we're proposing, part of which is going to be the senior center. So, by all means, as I said to you earlier, you can vote it down, that's fine, however, we're trying to do this in a fiscal manner, looking forward to make sure that when we do come back, we're gonna be asking for specific amounts for the strategic plan. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Nancy Toppin, twenty-six Glad Road, I move a motion on the amendment.
The, is there a second? There is a motion to move the question. If that motion's approved by a two-thirds vote, debate on the amendment will be terminated, and we will come to a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of terminating debate on the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous, debate, debate on the amendment is over, we now come to a vote. Let me try to explain what it is that we're voting on, uh, in case anyone is not clear. Article Six, as originally presented, has seven items that were voted at previous town meetings, seven borrowings. One of the items is a one-point-nine million dollar authorization voted at the September special town meeting under Article Five for a new senior center at seventy-five Branch Street. The motion to amend the article, if passed, would delete that particular item from the list of items that will be expunged from the books. Is everyone clear on that? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails, timidly, fails. We now return to discussion on the main motion, which pertains to all of the items that were originally proposed. I see no one standing at the mics, this requires only a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Six as originally presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by a majority. Article Seven, Mr. Danek.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to town establish a special reserve fund relative to acceptance of public waste pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter eighty, Section one, and to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of two-hundred-thousand dollars, and/or authorize the treasurer to borrow, with the approval of the selectmen, the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars, for a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars, for the purpose of initially establishing the fund to pay for the costs of newly accepted public waste...
Hold on, Mr. Danek, we're, mid-course direction. Go ahead and take it from the top.
Let me, uh, restate that again. Mr. Moderator, I move... Mr. Moderator, I move to town establish a special revenue fund relative to acceptance of public ways pursuant to the mass general laws, Chapter 80, Section 1, and to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $200,000 and authorize the Treasurer to borrow with the approval of the Selectmen the sum of $158,000 for a total of $358,000 for the purpose of initially establishing the fund to pay for the costs of newly accepted public ways and conforming them to establish road standards and further provide that such costs incurred by the town shall be reimbursed in full by the assessment betterments to property over owners on the way for said work.
Is there a second? Second of Mr. Norton, discussion, Mr. Dan.
Thank you again. This article would create a special revenue fund that would fund the cost of improvements and repairs to accepted public ways. Seed money is required to establish this fund that will be paid ultimately by assessing betterments to the affected homeowners on those ways. Last year, we accepted several roadways with agreements from homeowners that they would pay the cost of the improvements through betterments to their streets. This amount totals to $358,000, and the town is obligated to make these repairs and assess the betterments. Once the betterment fund flows into the account, it will be self-supporting. The two roads were accepted at this year's, or the two roads were accepted at this year's annual town meeting, do not require any improvements, and we'll note that they do not contain any betterment language. In essence, folks, what we're doing is this, we're creating seed money for fun to be able to build the roads up to the standards that the town has accepted those roadways. So in other words, the roads have already been built, they didn't, private roads, they didn't meet the requirements that the town set. Consequently, we went to all the people on those roads, we said, this is what you need to do in order to improve them, we're assessing a betterment to them, they're all going to pay it. However, where does the money come from? We could go out, we could bond it, we could borrow it. Instead, what we're doing is we're borrowing from ourselves, putting it into a fund, and then as the people begin to pay the betterments, we're going to be getting that money back. So we're basically trying to borrow from ourselves in order to build these roads without having to borrow money outside. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. DiLorenzo.
The Advisory Committee was unanimous in their approval of this motion.
I see no one standing at the mics. Passage this article requires a two-thirds vote on account of borrowing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article eight, Mr. Dan. Yes? I'll state the point of order after giving your name, please.
Sorry, Jen Morrison, 60, Mordecai Lincoln Road.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'd like to request that Article four, letter J, be reconsidered.
Is there a second to reconsider Article four, letter J? It's been moved and seconded. There is no discussion. All those in favor of reconsidering Article four, letter J, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion is defeated, and the matter may not be reconsidered again. Right. Let's carry on. I think, Mr. Dan, you were...
Sure. Ms. Moderator, Article eight, Funding for Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust. I move to town raise and appropriate the sum of $68,884 for the purpose of funding the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund pursuant to Article seven of the April 11, 2011 Annual Town Meeting warrant as authorized by the General Court in order to offset the anticipated future costs of providing post-retirement health and life insurance benefits to current and future retired town and school employees.
Is there a second? Second of Mr. Murray, discussion, Mr. Dan.
This fund was created last year at the annual town meeting. This is a federally mandated requirement. We're obligated to do this whether you like it or not. And it's directing towns like Situate to begin to start to fund the cost of health insurance benefits for its retirees. Our current unfunded liability, get this, current unfunded liability is 52, or 53 million Basically, 54 million dollars. If we had to pay it today, we'd have to come up with it. Last year, we appropriated $14,000 into this fund just to establish it. This year, we're looking to put in 68,000, almost 69. The financial policy for determining this amount, the 69,000, is 68,884, for determining the annual corporation is basically 2% of the town's retirement assessment. Seems like a drop in the bucket, definitely is, but it's something that we have to do. And so now we are looking at the 2% going forwards, what we're going to be trying to allocate to this fund. Not much more I can tell you other than it's federally mandated. Whether you want to do it or not, you have to. So we're looking forward to trying to appropriate a sum amount, in this case, 69,000. It seems like a small amount, but it's better than nothing. This was unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Dolan.
Good evening. The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this motion.
This requires a majority vote. There being no one at the microphones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article nine, Mr. Dan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from available funds in the Waterways Enterprise Receipts, the sum of $928,574, and $89,050 from the Waterways retained earnings for the purpose of funding the Waterways Enterprise Fund for the ensuing fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2012, as follows. Personal services, $359,718. Other expenses, $657,906.
Second of Mr. Harris, discussion, Mr. Dan.
This article is not, no significant operational changes from the, from last year's budget. Balance after town meeting and the retained earnings will be $411,031. The current retained earnings balance is $580,081. We're using $89,050 from that retained earnings to balance the budget. This obviously was unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen.
From the Advisory Committee, Ms. David.
The Advisory Committee agrees with this Selectmen unanimously approves this motion.
This requires a majority vote. There being no one standing at the mics, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 10, Mr. Dan.
This is the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from available funds in the Golf Course Enterprise Fund Receipts, the sum of $1,221,534 for the purpose of funding the Little's Golf Course for the ensuing fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2012, as follows. Personal services, $174,253. The other expenses, $1,047,281.
Is there a second? Second of Chairman Banyani, discussion, Mr. Dan.
This year's golf budget is based on an increase that the Board of Selectmen decided in order to balance the budget. It was voted this past January. While the Board has been trying to keep the cost down for play, whether it's for your annual dues, or whether it's for just a round of golf, we determine it would be best to increase the price because we've kept it low during these economic challenging times. Even with these increases, our projected revenue is going to be really close. Right now, we have $7,043 in the retained earnings. By increasing the fees, we are projecting that we're going to maintain that amount. But given the fiscal situation, the fact that many people are trimming, cutting back, not playing golf as much, the golf course is running very close, but we believe it will be actually turning a profit. And so therefore, we're asking for the support of this article.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Dolan.
There has been a reduction in the expenses at the golf course to provide that surplus. The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this motion.
There being no one at the vote at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 11, Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 11, the Waste Water Enterprise Fund. Move that the town transfer from available funds in Waterways Enterprise Fund Receipts, the sum of $1,921,680, and $462,699 from Waste Water retained earnings, and $646,994 taxation for the purpose of funding the wastewater treatment operation, and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July 1, 2012, as follows. Personal services, $459,77. And other expenses, $2,572,296.
Is there a second? Second of Mr. Harris, discussion, Mr. Norton.
Again, there was no significant changes from past years. Enterprise funds, as we know, are only paid for by people who take advantage of those particular enterprises, as such is the case with the Waterways. Free Water, excuse me.
Sorry. From the Advisory Committee, Ms. Anthony.
Yes, the Advisory Board has reviewed this article, and unanimously approved it. The wastewater treatment plant is operated under the direct supervision of Roland, the Division Supervisor, and in the overall direction of Mr. Bangit, the DPW Director. This treatment plant is a pride and joy of the town. It operates within all of the state and federal permits and is a fine, a fine piece of technical operation. What they're doing right now, Mr. Bangit is doing right now, is continuing with the infiltration info program. What that does is eliminate groundwater that gets into the system. And the groundwater that gets into the system, what that takes up capacity in the treatment plant. And so that capacity is taken up by the groundwater, reduces the capacity of the plant, therefore it reduces the number of people connected to the plant. So it's a very, very important, very important project. He's also implementing the, a part of the overall expansion program for the sewer of the town. Mr. Bangit, right now, is doing the sewer in the Shkwaske Pond area, and there's real problems with pollution in that area. So when that project's done, it'll eliminate a lot of the pollution. So we unanimously recommend approval of this project.
Discussion. There being no one at the mics, approval of this would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 12, Transfer Station Enterprise Fund. On the motion, Mr. Norton.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 and transfer from Transfer Station Enterprise Receipts, the sum of $1,050,752 for the purpose of funding the landfill and transfer station operation and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July 1, 2012, as follows. Personal services, $208,33. And other expenses, $942,719.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, discussion, Mr. Norton.
Again, there are no significant changes in fiscal year 12. Current return earnings and balances are $279,420, but none of these funds will be used to balance the fiscal 13 budget.
From the Advisory Committee, Ms. Con. Mr. DiLorenzo, pardon me. My apologies to Ms. Con.
No, it's my turn to apologize because I made a mistake. For those of you looking in your book, you'll notice that if you back away the total expenses from the total revenues, you wouldn't come up with a positive $3,300, you'd come up with a negative $6,700. However, the good news is the rest of the calculations are correct. So if you look at the last year deficit of 51,941, and you look at this year's of 6,700, the net gain is a 45,241. So the numbers do balance in spite of my error. I apologize. I don't want that to overshadow the good work that the transfer station management has done in forecasting very realistic revenues, in managing their costs, and negotiating with our outside suppliers for better rates. The result of that is not only have we picked up in efficiency, but pending your approval of this article, the retained earnings in the transfer station will be $279,020. The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. DiLorenzo. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 13, Water Enterprise Fund. On the motion, Mr. Norton.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from available funds in the Water Enterprise Receipts, the sum of $2,448,49, and for water retained earnings, the sum of $33,484 for the purpose of funding water division operation and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July 1, 2012, as follows. Personal services, $718,883.
Is there a seconded? Second of Mr. Harris, discussion, Mr. Norton.
Again, Mr. Moderator, there are no significant changes from fiscal year 12. Current return earnings balances, $695,488, with $33,484 of that to be applied to the fiscal 13 budget.
From the Advisory Committee, Ms. Con.
The Advisory Committee voted unanimously in support of this article, and we recommend that you approve the motion.
No one standing at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 14, Stabilization Fund. On the motion, Mr. Norton.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the difference between the levy net and the levy limit to the stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 3, 5B.
Moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Norton.
This is an annual article that was put before our town meeting to fund the stabilization.
From the Advisory Committee, Ms. Con.
The Advisory Committee voted unanimously in support of this article, and we recommend that you approve the motion.
No one standing at the mics, approval of this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 15, on motion, Mr. Norton.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town assume liability in the manner provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 91, Section 29, is amended for all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the improvement, development, maintenance, and detection of tidal, the non-tidal rivers and streams, great ponds, harbors, tide waters, foreshores, and shores along the public beach in accordance with Section 11 of said Chapter 91, and to authorize the Selectmen to execute a diligence bond on indemnity, therefore to the public.
Seconded by Selectman Murray, discussion, Mr. Norton.
Mr. Moderator, this allows maintenance work to be done in all these areas. It's an annual article that we put before town meeting.
From the Advisory Committee, Ms. Con.
The Advisory Committee voted unanimously in support of this article, and we recommend that you approve the motion.
There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Thank you. All right. Article 16. Here's what we're going to do on this one, because this is a longer one. We're going to allow Selectman Murray to make the motion. We'll take a second. Board of Selectmen, through Selectman Murray, will offer comments they wish to make. Board of Selectmen, through Selectman Murray, will offer comments they wish to make, and then, uh, John Bowman of the CPC will give an overview of the community preservation article. Uh, then we'll get the recommendation of the advisory committee from Mr. Judge. I will then move through the article and ask for holds on each of the seventeen items listed. So with that background, Selectman Murray. Yeah, just real quick.
Thank you. Um, before I begin, I would just like to say, uh, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and essentially the entire town, uh, our thanks to the, to the CPC Committee, Community Preservation Committee, and Mr. Bowman, the chair in particular, for doing such a terrific job, and he will mention, uh, the members of this committee later, but, uh, John, you've done a great job as usual. Uh, this is a huge article and a lot of time, we all know, and so I just would like to thank John right off.
If you might want to, uh, turn to page forty-two in your advisory committee report, and you can follow along there.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town here and act on recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, Community Preservation Budget, pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, as printed in the warrant. Item one, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation FY two thousand and thirteen estimated revenues to be reserved for the creation and support of community housing consistent with the Act. Item two, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation FY two thousand and thirteen estimated revenues to be reserved for acquisition and preservation of historic resources consistent with the Act. Item three, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation FY two thousand and thirteen estimated revenues to be reserved for acquisition and preservation of open space consistent with the Act. Sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars from Community Preservation FY two thousand and thirteen estimated revenues for administrative expense of the Community Preservation Committee. Item five, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for acquisition of open space, the Higgins McAllister property, up to seventeen thousand dollars per acre. Item six, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for acquisition of open space, the Nicholas Wade Preserve Litchfield property, up to five thousand dollars per acre. Item seven, thirty thousand dollars for acquisition of open space, the Lindt property, up to five thousand dollars per acre. Item eight, twenty thousand dollars for acquisition of open space, the Saminsky property, up to five thousand dollars per acre. Item nine, five thousand five hundred dollars for acquisition of open space, the Benomi property, up to two thousand dollars per acre. Item ten, three thousand dollars for historic resources, the Ellis House facade preservation. Item eleven, fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for historic resources, the restoration of the William Cushing diamond plaque. Item twelve, six thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for historic resources, restoration of the Lighthouse ledgers. Item thirteen, twenty thousand dollars for historic resources, Bullock and Bucket House restoration. Item fourteen, twenty-five thousand dollars for land for recreational use, the Situate Historic Bike Trail. Item fifteen, one thousand five hundred dollars for land for recreational use, the Teak Sherman Community Garden. Item sixteen, one hundred and four thousand dollars for land for recreational use, the softball field. Item seventeen, fifty thousand dollars for land for recreational use, Bates Lane and Hollycrest parking areas.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, discussion, Mr. Murray.
I'll let Mr. Bowman, uh, speak on behalf of the committee and provide details, however, I would like to report that the selectmen, uh, voted unanimously in favor, uh, four-zero in all of these except for item five. The Higgins McAllister property, in which the vote was tied two to two, and item eleven was unanimous three-zero in favor, item twelve was unanimous three-zero in favor, and item sixteen was three to one in favor. All others were unanimous four-zero at the time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, well, uh, Mr. Judge, from the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The advisory committee recommends unanimous approval of this motion with the following exceptions. Items eight and nine, which is Saminsky, Bonnany, respectively, had unanimous disapproval of over the eight to zero. Disapproval of these items was due to the advisory committee not proceeding the benefit of these properties of the town Situate. Items six and seven, Litchfield and Lindt Field properties, respectively, unanimous six to zero in support of the motion. And item five, which is Higgins McAllister, received a majority, five to one vote in support of the motion. The dissenting opinion focused on the issue of the town's home getting regulations and/or conservation restrictions on discharge of firearms and hunting on town roof properties in the West End, which is accumulated up to over three hundred acres with community preservation funds. The town should now buy more land in the West End. Thank you.
All right. From the CPC Chairman Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and I'll be brief. I know it's been a long evening already. Um, I'd like to thank the town just for its commitment to CPC. I mean, to date, we've received over five point seven million dollars in matching funds. We've raised a total of over twelve million dollars, and we've done nine million dollars in projects. We've received, uh, basically seventy-six percent return on the money we put into CPC. We still have a significant three million dollar fund balance, um, that's available to do with, I, I think there's some upcoming important projects we're gonna look at. Um, I'd like to thank the members of the committee, and our committee is made up of five members of other boards in town who not only do CPC, but they, they serve in roles on other boards, so, so they're out a lot of nights doing this, and, you know, tonight we have with us Frank Snow, who's on CPC and is also in the Conservation Commission, um, Bill Lindbacher, who's on the planning board, Mr. Gates from the Storil Commission, we have Michael Collins from the Housing Authority, and Richard Lane from Recreation. Um, there are also four at-large members, of which I'm one. We have Mr. Scott, who's not here this evening yet, I, I think he's working. Um, we have Lisa Fenton, who is the vice chair of the committee and, um, provides me with a tremendous amount of help in what we do, and we have George Crafton, who's also an at-large member. So I'd like to thank the members of the committee for everything. This year, we had over two point one million dollars in applications. The, the articles you see before you, ignoring the, the first four, which are just fund transfers, are about nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, you know, seventy-five percent of which is land acquisition, which is really what we were created to do. Um, we're looking for some more flexibility, and hopefully with the help of Representative Cantwell and some legislation, we're gonna be able to help with, you know, spending money on improving town fields, things we can't do now, um, legally, but hopefully there's some legislation pending that will let us do some things the town sorely needs with that other three million dollars. Um, and, and part of that might be helping in this master plan we're all talking about. Finally, just as to the articles to this year, I mean, we've, we've got some great land acquisition articles. I, I know there was, you know, respectfully, not everybody agrees with what we do, and that, and that's why we have this meeting, um, you know, the, the items, I believe it was eight and nine, that the advisory board doesn't recommend. They're very small pieces of land, they, they are, you know, some of them are primarily wet, but they're very sensitive, they're sensitive areas, and the Conservation Commission thinks they're very important to protecting, you know, um, in, in one point, the Benomi property, there's a red maple swamp that, that abuts, that, you know, owning this piece helps us protect that better, and the, um, Saminsky property is at the head of Bond Brook, where, you know, we're talking about, you know, fixing the herring run. I mean, they're trying to recreate the herring and do something with the dam there, so we think that Bond Brook piece is important, and, you know, we've offered a relatively small amount of money compared to what we usually pay for these pieces because they are primarily patented on all of those. Um, with that, I, you know, I, I thank you, and I thank you for all your support.
All right. Here's what we're gonna do now. If, uh, again, if you turn over to pages forty-two and forty-three of your advisory committee book, I will call off the number of each item. If you wish to have discussion on an item, please say in a loud and clear voice, hold. At the conclusion of calling for holds, those items which have not been held will be subject to a vote without discussion, and after which we will return to those that are held for more discussion. Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. Number five. Number five is held. Number six. Number seven. Number eight. Number eight is held. Number nine. Number nine is held. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Sixteen is held. Seventeen. The items that were held are five, eight, nine, sixteen, and seventeen. We will vote on the remaining items, two of which, numbers six and seven, require a two-thirds vote, which means that I will ask for a two-thirds vote to pass the group as a bundle. All those in favor of the non-held items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a unanimous vote. Would the person who held item five proceed to the mic? And anyone else who wishes to discuss that, head to the mics. Item five.
I'm the one held.
Okay, uh, gentleman at my left.
Steve Harvick, four oh one one, Hound Road. Uh, we've got a couple questions. Uh, why are we the selectmen tied? What are we doing about the hunting regulations that I guess the board, the advisory board brought up? And perhaps most importantly, why is this costing us seventeen thousand dollars an acre? And we've only appropriated five thousand dollars an acre for the other end? It seems like there's something, uh, doesn't seem quite square to me. So if that could be explained.
To answer the question, Chairman Board.
And, and I'm gonna respond to the value per acre, I, I can't really respond to the selectmen. Um, th- this is thirty and a half acres of primarily upland. Um, the pieces that you see for five thousand and two thousand dollars an acre are primarily wetlands. This is, this is developable land, and, and again, our vote i- is premised upon, we pay seventeen thousand acre or fair market value, whichever is less. If it turned out to be more wetland than we thought it was, and it, it was a lesser value, we would only pay that lesser amount, but, you know, for uplands, seventeen thousand dollars an acre for developable uplands is an incredibly low price. Um, I, I believe there are a lot of developers that would love to get their hands on this property and, and build on it, and, and I think it will be gone if we don't act on it. Uh, I think it will get developed and, and there's access to it, so the seventeen thousand acre is what the CPC has paid as a cap that we've tried to hold on developable uplands.
Are you generalizing on the question? Okay, well, we're once in the first, go ahead. On the question.
So we're gonna have the two selectmen who voted in one direction to, to speak as to their reasons.
But, okay, and that was part of the question. Go ahead. Mr. Gates.
It, to the gentleman up there at the top, yes. Um, both Selectman Harris and myself voted against this. My reason for it was that it abuts the kind of Rod Club, that's in the middle of litigation, we're waiting for a decision on it. The land where the firing range is directly goes across this parcel, my feeling position is, let's wait a year, let's see what happens. Uh, if they're gonna be putting conditions in so that they're gonna be indoors, then it makes sense to buy the land. My fear was that we'd have projectiles going across that parcel, so I thought we should wait a year before we decide to spend half a million dollars on it.
Selectman Harris can answer the question.
I had asked a question a year or two ago, it had to do with the seventeen thousand dollars an acre. I really, that's just the way I feel. On some of these other articles, they weren't paying the people seventeen thousand an acre, that's, they feel it was worth less. You know, I've said it before, I said, you know, could we offer a little bit less money? It really has to do with the price of, you know, over half a million dollars. I just thought we should say that.
Lady to my left.
I'm Karen Connolly, thirty, Roundtree Lane. I was a dissenting vote on this purchase. Um, when, and I have great respect for the Community Preservation Committee, and for all the hard work that they do, and they have to do a lot of work to get things approved, and they have to come before various boards and do a lot of work, so I certainly appreciate it. Um, I will say, however, that when we, um, had the hearing at the advisory committee, the issue of the Rod and Hunt Club did come up, and at that point I was told, well, it doesn't really matter because hunting and shooting is allowed on town roof property in the West End. And in fact, if you look at the town bylaws, in fact, hunting and shooting, and I'm making a distinction there, between hunting and shooting. Shooting means you can literally go out into those woods, put a coke can in a tree, and shoot at it. Hunting is regulated, and we as a town, I think, have the right, we should be consulted as to what we should do with this land. Currently, we have three hundred acres, which is bigger than World's End. We spent three point nine million dollars on acquiring this land, now it's up to us to manage it. I was out there the other day, there are signs posting now, uh, showing where the Rod and Hunt Club border is, but in all the other signage, there is no mention of hunting or shooting anywhere. It's not on the town website, it's nowhere to be found. The woman in Norton, who was accidentally shot by a trained hunter, was in her own backyard. I don't know how we can tell the town we're buying this land for recreational purposes, including hiking. There's never any mention, any of these applications, that hunting is allowed and shooting is allowed on this land. I think it's up to the selectmen to take the lead on this, and to start to put some regulations in place that say what we as a town want on this land. And until we do, I just don't see the point, and this town, this property has actually been on the market numerous times in the past ten years and has not sold. At this point, I don't even think it's gonna be able to be sold to anyone else because of the pending litigation, and because of the fact that currently, hunting and shooting is allowed west of three A. Those of you who live on east of three A can rest assured, you're not, there's no hunting and shooting allowed there, with the exception of the Blagues and the Marshes around the North River. So I think until we as a town do a better job of managing the property that we've now put together, I think we should just put this on hold. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Uh, John Hip, forty-eight Blue Hill Road. Um, it seems like there've been a number of, uh, points made, um, in opposition. I think first, as, as far as the, uh, price of the land goes, um, seventeen thousand acres, as we said, will be what's paid, um, or, or what's established by appraisal, so we all know land is expensive in Situate. Building lots go for upwards of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, seventeen thousand acres, the strike rate is unreasonable, and it will be determined by an appraisal. Um, this is an important piece of land, it's the last piece in the puzzle, um, that a lot of folks have put a lot of effort into assembling. Why is it in the West End? That's where the land is, you know, that's where the open space is, so these are buildable areas that will be lost if we don't, um, act on them. The town has always supported these types of purchases. As far as the other issues around hunting and safety, um, I think those are, those are really distinct issues. Um, that has nothing to do with the purchase of this land, there's land abutting it, that has been conservation land, that has been open to hiking. There are no issues that, that I'm aware of in terms of anyone being endangered on any of these lands. Um, if the town wants to take up those, uh, concerns separately, that certainly, um, is, is possible and should be done, but, um, we need to move on purchases like this when they come available, and we're fortunate to be in a market right now where there isn't as much pressure for real estate development, but we all know that will change. Uh, it's a desirable place to live, and if we don't protect these areas, uh, there's really no way to get them back. If you wanna see what that looks like, uh, take a drive down Manloch Road and take a look at Wickham Pines, uh, which was an area behind our town forests, if you wanna call it that, um, that was irrevocably lost to development, and, uh, that's certainly not a great example, and we should move to prevent that in the future. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Frank Snow, Chairman of the Situate Conservation Commission. Um, just a few pieces, again, the price, for thirty acres for a half a million dollars, or whatever this appraise is out to be. CPC will not pay more than the appraised value. It is a bargain. It's an absolute bargain. It doesn't take much to see that. There's been a tremendous amount of work the last 10 years to acquire this massive land, almost 400 acres now in the West End that numerous people are using for all sorts of recreation. Certainly hiking, bird watching, whatever. There's a number of pieces of recreation. To single out hunting, I think, is a mistake to not buy this piece of property. Instead, because it might be used for hunting and so we shouldn't buy it, would be a serious fall. Each one of these pieces of property that we acquire have a conservation restriction placed on it. And that conservation restriction spells out what can and can't be done on that property. And it's not done in a box or in some void. It's done with public input. Lots of people are able to speak to those issues. And we take all of that information and then decide how best to use that. One of the things that's been mentioned by CPC's chairman is to possibly create a group that we could get input, have some meetings on all the folks that use the property, that abut the property, that have some interest in the property, to come together and say, what's important to you? How best do we use this piece of property? What would be a safe way to use it from a lot of standpoints? I really don't think it's a good place to get into a debate about whether we use it for hunting or mountain biking or altering vehicles this evening. There's all kinds of uses that we could consider for this property. But the time and place for that is when we establish our conservation restrictions and discuss that and do it in an educated format with all of the facts. The fact that we're here for tonight is that we have a piece of property available to us at a reasonable price that will complete our purchase of a fairly large piece of property that we may not see that come about again. And I think that that's what we should stick to this evening when we make this decision. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman.
Just briefly, and Frank covered the price aspect. I don't think we need to beat that to death. I think it's a bargain. I think it's worth a lot more to a developer. And I think if a developer had this PNS, he'd act on it quickly. As far as the Rod and Gun Club litigation, I believe there are both sides of that litigation here tonight. It's a civil court suit that's in, I believe, Plymouth Superior Court. There's a Superior Court judge who's heard experts on both sides. He's going to decide whether it's safe for the Rod and Gun Club to operate there or not. In respect to Mr. Dennehy and everybody else, but that judge is in a far better position to decide whether the Rod and Gun Club is safe to operate there or not. It's not for us to decide. And quite honestly, I really don't know of anybody that's been heard out there. I don't look forward to anybody being heard out there. We posted the property because one of the parties that litigation suggested that someone might wander onto the Rod and Gun Club property. We already own 300 acres, a lot of which borders other parts of the Rod and Gun Club. I don't know of anyone wandering on, but, you know, being cautious, we decided to post it and say, if you go any further this way, you're entering the Rod and Gun Club. I don't know that I thought that was totally necessary, but we wanted to go that extra mile to try and protect our citizens. As far as regulations on hunting, and Karen and I, I respect the advisory board a great deal. That's part of the dynamic. We disagree sometimes. We have regulations on hunting. Currently, those regulations say you can hunt on the west side of 3A. There are people in this room who have power to change those regulations anytime they want. And as a matter of fact, we are required to put a conservation restriction on that property. I don't decide what's in it. The selectmen, town council, and the conservation commission finally approved that conservation restriction and it's recorded at the registry of deeds. That conservation restriction can say no hunting. It can say no hiking. It can say nobody can go on the property at all. It's just for deer and raccoons and rabbits. And I still think it's something we should acquire. You know, we need to protect habitat. We need to protect wildlife. We need to protect open space. And that's what we do. And it isn't always for hiking or hunting or for people to use it. Maybe it just sits there. But, you know, the presumption that this property would be there if we wait a year. Well, you know what? It took a lot of years to get the McAllister piece under PNS. It wasn't always available to us at this price. Next year, it may not. Maybe they'll decide they can get twice as much money for a developer and why should they do it? You know, the town kind of said they didn't want it. So I suggest that waiting a year means the property may not be there. We don't have a PNS that lets us wait a year and buy it. You can restrict this property. You can go to your selectmen, conservation commission and say, we don't want hunting on this property. As a matter of fact, we don't want any trails on it because we think somebody might get shot. I still think we should acquire it. I think we should protect it. I think it's a, you know, I think the applicants and the people who are willing to sell us the property are doing a good thing for the town, believe it or not. I think you should vote in favor of this acquisition.
There being no one else at the mics, approval of this motion would require a two-thirds vote. Acquisition of land, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by a two-thirds vote. Any seven people who wish to challenge my determination, you may stand now. Seeing no one standing, we now move to the next held item, which is number eight. Gentleman at the center of the mic.
Hi, Mark Bissell, 28 Captain of Lynchvilleing. Held this one, I wanted to hear from the advisory board. Respect all the work that we've done, both teams. Thank you very much for all the hard work. Unanimous disapproval. Could someone please enlighten us as to the thought process behind that?
Volunteers? Mr. Judge.
The interesting thing we had after discussing the details of the property from the community preservation commission was that the property was mostly wet. As far as the retained value, as far as the town, we didn't see the perceived value that the town would gain by having purchased the property. So we didn't see there's a gain for the town. We thought the mic would be used to do a better purchase.
Gentleman to my left.
Frank Snow, Conservation Commission. This piece of property abuts the Brown Brook estuary. We're in the process of looking at Hunter's Tron, the Brown Brook area. Possible reintroducing the drunken brownless fish to that area. We feel that this, acquiring this piece of property gives us some control, some access, and protects the buffer around that as well. For this amount of money, it's good value. It's also right adjacent to North Situate. And with some short extension, there could be a little path into the Brown Brook. It's just a decent piece of property to hang on to and for $20,000, be ashamed to let it go.
There being no one else at the mics, acquisition of land requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion for item number eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted declared two-thirds vote. If any seven people challenge my determination, you may rise now. No one has risen and we now move to item number eight. Oh, nine. Pardon me. We just did it. Sorry. Gentleman at the center of the mic.
Mark Bissell, 48 Captain of Lynchvilleing. Same question on number nine. Can you describe your unanimous opposition from the advisory board, please?
From the advisory committee, Mr. Judge.
Thank you to the moderator. The thought process for this piece of property was the same as the previous. Although affordable or cheap, we didn't see the retained value that the town would benefit by having purchased it. So we decided that the mic could be used for a better purchase in the future.
I see Mr. Snow waiting to my left.
This piece of property is off of Hollis Street. It abuts, or is part of, a red maple swamp. For anybody that used to walk the railroad bed before the train came in, you could walk from Hollis Street down to the Highway 9 and especially in the fall. This was a beautiful piece of property in the town Situate. The access to that is pretty limited now with the train. This will allow a little bit of access to that red maple swamp. Again, it's protecting a piece of property that we feel is important to the town. And $2,000 acre, I think we're getting good value.
There's no one else at the mics. Appropriation of money for the purchase of land requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted declared two-thirds vote. Any seven people who wish to challenge my determination may rise now. No one has arisen. Now we move to item number 16. Lady to my left.
Mary Ellen Schlans, 50, Manlock Road. I have a question about this location. It's discussed as being between the town hall and the high school. We had a speaker a little earlier from the conservation commission saying that there was a veronal pool in this area. And I'm just questioning why we would want to put a softball field in that area. It just seems like a bad idea.
Recognize Mr. Snow of the Conservation Commission.
The issue of the veronal pool is the point between the town hall and the high school. And we did acknowledge that is a veronal pool when the softball field was originally proposed. It was closer to that, working with the rec department and DQW and others. It's been moved away from that veronal pool and feel that that's a safe area.
Chairman Bowman.
And just so we're clear too, what we've been able to do is originally there was a project that was a playground that was going directly behind the town hall. The people from the rec department got together so that the softball field and the playground are going to be in the same location. It's going to be very much to the, sort of to the left of where that veronal pool is. So if you're behind town hall between the high school, it's going to be up towards that hill where there's, there's a road that I don't remember where your kids that used to be able to go, but you can't. It's going to be up into that hill. It's not going to affect the veronal pool. And it's actually going to have a much better traffic flow because it's going to give you a two-way road so that you're going to have a second way in and out of the high school. And the only proviso that's on it right now is it is going to await the master plan before they start construction so that we make sure we're not putting a softball field that then when they go to build a middle school, we're going to tear out the softball field. So we've agreed with the rec department and the selectmen that it won't go forward till sort of the master plan establishes that it is out of the path of any potential middle school that might go on that side.
Lady to my left.
Lisa Thompson, 40, Labs Way. I concur with Mary Ellen's question as well, and that was going to be one of mine. I do apologize that I haven't been to the meetings where you've discussed this. But just to clarify your point about, one, where the walkway is up into the Cedarwood Road area? Is that what you're saying? Does that mean you're going to cut that hill out?
Do I answer a question, Chairman Bowman?
So basically, the home from by the required distance and then relocate the bus road. That's going to now be a two-lane road to go around it. And we think it's a much safer traffic situation. I believe rec has met with traffic rules and regs and everybody's looked at the plan and thinks it's a good access plan. So I don't think it cuts that whole hill out. I don't think that's a, it's not a huge cut. I think it fits in there without doing that.
So wouldn't it be better, considering the master plan that we were discussing about the junior high moving where the town hall is and everything? Wouldn't it be better to postpone this until, I mean, it's not as if it's a land purchase where we're under pressure. Wouldn't it be better to postpone it until we have a clearer picture of what we're doing, especially where this veronal pool is involved?
Yeah, Lisa, we did discuss that at length. And our sense, the board of selectmen's sense, is that this is a very urgent situation. This field has been brought up many, many times in the past. And as Mr. Vignati said earlier this evening when talking about the grand plan, this grand plan is not going to lurk around for two, three, four, or five years. We're going to do this study, which you folks in your good wisdom support it. And we're going to find out if we're going to be able to move forward with that or not. And we're going to know within a year. The reason why we want to put this forward, and Mr. Bowman just said, you know, no one's going to be moving on this until we find out the status of the grand plan. But if the grand plan rapidly comes out to be not working, we want to have this allocation reserved so we could move forward with this field and start serving the people that want to use that field as rapidly as possible without having to, you know, do any more unnecessary delay. There's been a lot of momentum working on this field at this location. Environmental concerns about the veronal pool have been completely answered successfully and safely. So we want to be able to move forward on this if the grand plan doesn't work. But no one's doing a thing until the grand plan gets figured out. So your point is absolutely taken and we have, in fact, considered that point. So thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Thank you. Eric Richmond, 3A, Tree Lane. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this. This is something the Recreation Commission and a lot of committees and other people in this town have worked very hard on. Where we put the softball field, again, we did address the environmental issue. Can we move this away from the veronal pool? In original, originally moving it, the engineer suggested putting it up into that hill where there were some significant cuts. And there was also some safety issues involved. With the master plan in mind, there was a playground project that was approved for behind town hall, separated from the complex where the basketball courts are and the street hockey facilities are, tennis courts, football fields. So we took all this into account. We met with the school committees, public safety, and we came up with a plan. We're very confident we'll work with any sort of master plan. It brings the softball field area, it brings the playground area, all into the area with those new basketball facilities, the street hockey. It's something that works really well together. We've added then a two-lane road, additional parking for these facilities. And on top of that, we put sidewalks in so there is good safe access, handicap access, not only along the roadway, but cuts along the edge of the veronal pool and connects the high school area to these facilities as well. So we put a lot of effort into it and that, you know, as the chairman said, we did agree that we wouldn't move forward until we ensure that this works with that master plan. We never wanted to step on that master plan. But we feel very confident that what we've come up with is going to work great with any master plan for that piece of property. Thank you.
Just one more piece, even though...
Mr. Snow. For the second time.
If any piece of this is within the buffer zone around this veronal pool, it'll have hearings, public hearings, and a notice as any other project would. So it'll be, folks with environmental concerns can be sure that we will view this like any other project. Thank you.
There being no one else at the mics, approval of this item would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority vote, passed. Item 17. Gentleman to my right.
Fox, Flatbroke. Is there any way we can reconsider number five?
Well, you can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Reconsider number five.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Vignati. Discussion. There being none, all those in favor of reconsidering item number five signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion to reconsider fails. It may not be resurrected. Item 17. Sorry. Lady to my left.
Good evening. My name is Noreen Wilson and I reside at 188 Flatbroke. I brought this up for a few reasons. But first, I'd like to say thank you to the Conservation Committee for all of its efforts in its acquisition of land and the ability to use it in many different forms. I myself take advantage of that almost on a daily basis off of Bates Lane. My concern is this parking lot up Bates Lane. I'd also like to go on record and say thank you to Mr. Snow for his many years of generosity in letting people park in his piece of land across the street, which allows people to get up into that land and use it. My concern here on Bates Lane is that I think if you put a parking lot way back there, you run the risk of a public safety issue. Bates Lane has been a contentious issue, I think, for many years prior to my arrival here in town. And I see that it's a, I'm not sure what we're calling it today, a statutory way, a private way, a public way. But to put a parking lot up there without any utilities for lights, I think maybe... for lights, I think maybe will lend itself to other types of recreation that maybe we don't want to be going on up there. So those are my concerns. Mr. Snow also mentioned before that I think that there'll be a committee formed to maybe look at where that parking lot would go, but I would ask that a lot of consideration goes into putting a parking lot up that lane and all of the different things that it invites prior to doing so. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. And again, so first of all, this is more than a parking lot just on Bates Lane. We're hoping to establish a parking lot. And parking lot, these aren't going to be big paved parking areas. This is going to be, you know, a gravel dirt parking area. Right now, to date, for to access that three hundred plus acres reparking on Mr. Snow's property across the street, Mr. Snow, I believe, would like to use his property for something else than, you know, our parking area, understandably. We don't know the exact location of Bates Lane. I understand that there's a new home being built halfway down. We're thinking somewhere in the proximity of that, so there will be people and lights, and we're conscious of that. We're also talking about establishing a parking area somewhere in Holly Crest for the Higgins-McAllister Access and up by Itchy's Corner where we acquired the Hennessy parcel. There's also a piece we have that, you know, might be able to park, you know, five to ten cars off the street to access it from that point. So we're talking about creating two or three parking areas to get into that three hundred and fifty, four hundred acres of conservation land. And yeah, exactly where it is on Bates Lane, we do understand the concern. Mr. Snow is probably more well-versed than I on where we would put it, but the idea is there is a house being constructed there. We can put it in an area where hopefully it's more visible, and it won't be a place for, you know, other activities as much as we can make it.
Gentleman to my right.
Just one, I don't know if I said committee because I don't think I want to be on another committee. But we will have a study group to look at how this parking and access trails and all those things are implemented, and it was Mr. Bowman's suggestion that we form a group, informal or sub to conservation, that we will look at all those things and address all the concerns that you've had, whether it's the access, misuse of the property, how do we control that, will be looked at carefully before we make those final decisions.
Lady to my right.
Amber Vine, tenth and Chris Road. I need to understand, I need a little more clarification on just how much of Bates Lane, which was adjudicated as an inaccessible private way a number of years ago. And my concern is if we start approving this to have a parking lot toward the end of it that is going to then connect with Holly Crest, we open ourselves up to further development further back in conjunction with the Hennessy property and Indian Wings.
Mr. Bowman.
And I call this, maybe I confuse things, but we're not talking about connecting this to Holly Crest. We're talking about a parking area for maybe four or five cars off of Holly Crest and a parking area for some cars off Bates Lane and a separate parking area over by the Hennessy piece, and they're not connected. There's no roadway between them. I mean, you're going to have to get out of your car and walk over to Holly Crest and, you know, maybe have another car over there. I don't know, but so it's not going to make a connection and, you know, I don't think we're talking about putting parking areas for a hundred cars. We're talking, you know, some little pocket parking areas that might be...
But how far up Bates Lane are you going to go?
I believe this is maybe a halfway up Bates Lane. I believe there's a new house going on the other side of Bates Lane, and this would be on the right side across from that, Frank, if that's...
Do I answer a question, Mr. Snow?
The final location isn't clear, and again, we're going to be looking at how people use the property, where they'd like to enter the property, how they'd like to walk through, whether people want to be able to return. The trails are looping, whether they have an access point one end or the other. Most people want to be able to leave their car somewhere and go over. Right now, to access up Bates's Lane, folks have to park across the street, walk over up Clack Road a little bit and in. We'd like to have them be able to have a safe place to park. But again, we're going to look at all those issues. But this, we're not improving or developing this road. It's already there. It's already traveled, and it's a matter of making a safe place and an accessible place for folks to use, property that they've already purchased with their tax money and being able to access it and use it.
Does the town own land on both sides of Bates Lane as it goes forward to the T at the end of it?
To answer a question, anyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gentleman to my right.
Steve Bjorken, fifteen, Captain Daniel Litchfield Lane. I just want to let town meeting know there's only two parcels of privately owned property that abut Bates Lane, and they're all the way up at the other end near Indian Wings. So likelihood of any development from Clack Road up Bates Lane is not going to happen in the private sector.
All right. There's no one else at the mics. Approval of item seventeen would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. That brings us to article seventeen. For the selectman, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town rescind the balance of funds authorized but unexpended from prior community preservation projects totaling one hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents and transfer said funds into the Community Preservation Committee General Fund Balance or Reserve Fund Balance from which they originally appropriated as the case may be in accordance with the Community Preservation Act as listed in the Advisory Committee booklet.
Beautiful. Is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Harris. Discussion, Mr. Murphy.
Folks, this is sort of like some of the things you heard earlier tonight. This article reconciles unexpected surplus balances in previously approved projects and acquisitions by the Community Preservation Committee. Transfers the balance back into their general fund for future appropriation. So for example, if an article was approved back in whenever, say, two thousand and nine, and it was estimated to be at a certain dollar value per acre, but then the binding appraisal came in at less dollars per acre, then there's money left over, and this takes that leftover money and puts it back into CPC for use for future projects. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
For the Advisory Committee, Mr. Judge.
Mr. Murray, can I explain the purpose of this article? The Advisory Committee recommends unanimous approval of this motion.
Further discussion. Gentleman to my left.
Michael Hayes, thirty-five Allen Place. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to ask a question on this one as far as one hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the Affordable Housing Trust and why that's being done.
For the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the money was initially appropriated, and then because there were several ongoing studies as to what to do with the balance that they already had, they decided not to add to the fund that's currently in existence because of that existing money. So decided not to add to it until additional partners was made.
Thank you. I'd just like to encourage town meeting and the board of selectmen going forward. It seems to me the CPC, as far as the housing, Affordable Housing Trust initiative has seemed to lose some steam, and I'd love to see that reemphasized. Thank you.
There being no one else at the mics, approval of this motion would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority. Article eighteen on the motion, Mr. Harris.
I move that the town amend the general bylaws of the town, section two zero one one zero, the manner of calling the meeting by striking the words thirty days in the first sentence and inserting the words at least seven days.
Is there a second? Seconded, Chairman Vignani. Discussion, Mr. Harris.
This article changes the current bylaw requirement that the warrant be published thirty days in advance of the annual town meeting to no less than seven. The thirty-day requirement significantly impedes the ability of town officials to develop a timely budget as a warrant must be closed well in advance of town, knowing local aid numbers, employees' benefit amounts. So the printer requires also a week's notice, so budgets must be due from departments in November, only five twelfths into the fiscal year, unless somehow. Change in the bylaw would result in extra time to hone in on budget numbers with much more accuracy and reliability, providing the amount, additional amount of time for officials to review these issues and items that may arise at the last minute. The bylaw review voted unanimously in support of this article.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Rancino.
What this bylaw does is it gives the town officials more time to develop what they're presented for you tonight. The advisory board unanimously approves this proposal.
There being no one at the mics, approval of this amendment requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article nineteen flood plain maps adoption on the motion, Mr. Harris.
I move that the town amend the town's situat wetlands regulations by incorporating any additional requirements of paragraph sixty point three D Indy of the National Flood Insurance Protection, the NFIP. Regulations into the existing wetlands regulations and further to direct the Conservation Commission to adopt and incorporate said regulations into the town's situat wetlands regulations prior to July seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, after duly noticed public care.
Seconded, Mr. Norton. Discussion, Mr. Harris. You don't want to discuss, okay? No. Well, you usually tell us about it first.
The town's flood maps are updated every five years, as you may know. When they're approved by FEMA, the town must incorporate them into the wetlands regulations of the Conservation Commission after accepting at town meeting. This is a housekeeping item that we'll see every five years. The town's participation in this program assists homeowners in receiving reduced rates on their flood insurance. The bylaw review committee again voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Taylor.
The Advisory Committee unanimously agrees with this motion.
Discussion from the floor. There is no one at the mics. Approval of article nineteen requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article twenty, mooring regulations by law adoption. If you'll disinvulge me for one minute, I just want to put into the record that Greggy Harris, Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee, in memorandum dated March sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, states that the Bylaw Review Committee held a hearing on March fifteenth and recommended adoptions of articles eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And I'll give a copy of this to the town. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around this long. I've been waiting for this article here all night myself. It's one of my favorites. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend its waterways bylaws as follows. Section three zero nine one zero, definitions, insert the definition, commercial fisherman. An individual holding a federal or state commercial groundfish, lobster, and or scallop license whose principal means of employment is fishing and the sale of catch. Section three zero nine two zero, mooring permits by adding the following language at the end of subsection B. Subject to the town's situat mooring rules and regulations and waterways bylaws, subsection mooring rules and regulations. Each a mooring owned by a commercial fisherman as defined in section three zero nine one zero definitions with the approval of the harbor master may be used to moor a commercial fishing vessel owned by another commercial fisherman for up to two years. Section three zero nine two zero, replace the period at the end of the sentence with no person shall own more than one mooring with a comma and add the following language, except a commercial fisherman as defined in section three zero nine one zero definitions and an owner of a certified mooring service who may own up to two moorings for the purpose of mooring commercial fishing vessels owned by said commercial fisherman or commercial vessels used in the operation of certified mooring service. Furthermore, a commercial fisherman as defined in section three zero nine one zero definitions may also own one additional mooring for the purpose of mooring a recreational vessel owned by said commercial fisherman or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Harris. Discussion, Selectman Martin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This results from many discussions with the harbor master, the Waterways Commission, members of the situat commercial fleet, and other concerned citizens. And I see the Chairman of the Waterways Commission, John Murphy, is still in the back there, and other members of Waterways are around, and I'd like to thank them for their work on this, as well as Mr. Patterson, the harbor master. The basic point here is that commercial fishing is changing, and our bylaws need to change to keep up with these changing times. The intent of these mooring bylaw revisions is to stimulate economic activity in the commercial fishing fleet and in those ancillary businesses that depend on the fishing industry, people selling ice, fuel, moving the fish around as well. The first change would allow a mooring owned by a commercial fisherman to be used by another commercial fisherman for up to two years. Currently, one cannot utilize a mooring they do not own for longer than seven days. So for example, if a if a if a one commercial vessel is being hauled out and worked on, and it's going to be out for a couple of weeks, that mooring's lying empty and nobody else can use it, and we'd like to be able to have other commercial fishermen be able to use that as well. Because currently, if it is not being utilized, it's considered presumptive evidence that the mooring is being rented, which actually isn't allowed under the current law. So this change allows a fisherman who has a boat and state or federal permits to actively fish while they're on the mooring list, for example. The second change will allow a commercial fisherman to own up to two moorings for the purposes of mooring commercial fishing vessels. There's two reasons for this change. One is to allow fishermen to grow their business and take advantage of potential economies of scale. And with a lot of changes in the federal and the state regulations, for example, the commercial fishermen might want a couple of different vessels to be tailored for fishing for different types of catch. So currently, because an individual cannot own, oh, excuse me, this change also allows commercial fishermen to own one additional mooring for the purpose of mooring a recreational vessel. Currently, because an individual cannot own multiple moorings, if you're a commercial fisherman, then you're not allowed to have a recreational boat hooked up to a mooring either, just by virtue of their occupation, and we didn't think this made much sense and was fair at all. The final change we're asking you to vote to approve here is a tighter definition of commercial fishermen intended to prevent potential abuses of these proposed bylaw changes. The bylaw review committee voted to recommend this article, as the moderator has pointed out, and again, it results from lengthy discussion of commercial fishermen, concerned citizens, the harbor master, and the Waterways Commission as well. And we urge you to, the board of selectmen, we're unanimous in support of this, and we also urge your support as well.
From the Advisory Committee, Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The advisory board unanimously supported this article, recommends town meeting approve this motion.
Gentleman at the center of the mic.
Hi, Todd Breitenstein, twenty-eight Marshall Ave. I was just wondering, is the commercial fisherman's recreational mooring going to be open to other commercial fishermen for commercial fishing purposes?
I don't think so. I believe it's going to be tied to that person's name, just like any other recreational boat owner. You have to have the proof of title and all that sort of thing, but it's tied to the individual commercial fisherman. So that cannot go into the pool, if you will.
Gentleman at the center of the mic.
Jamie Gilmore, Ken seven thirty-five, First Parish Road. I have just one issue of the lead Lee's language at the very last sentence, or take any other action relative thereto, and I think that's what this gentleman was just speaking about as well. Just such an all encompassing end remark. I would prefer it if it reads, take that off and just read. It's the period at the end of the commercial fisherman.
I'll just address that to Mr. Gilmore. That is just surplusage that probably shouldn't have been included in the motion. I'm sure if Mr. Murray accepts it as an accidental inclusion and the secondary agrees, we can delete that.
I certainly approve of that suggestion. I certainly approve of that suggestion, Mr. Moderator.
And the secondar, well, I don't hear the, okay, he's good too, so I think we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. There being no one else at the mics, approval of this article requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article twenty-one, acceptance of public way, Ava's Lane, on the motion, Mr. Harris.
I move that the town vote to accept Ava's Lane as laid out by the Board of Selectmen as a public way.
It's moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Harris.
There's another street acceptance right after this. It's basically the same. I'll just read the backup for this one, because they are right next to each other, the same age, same things apply. The town has a street acceptance process that's been adopted by this board in two thousand and ten and endorsed by the Street Acceptance Committee. The legal process for acceptance of public ways is, you know, formalized. There are a number of specific deadlines that must be met, timeframes, the board to meet, including the layout of the way, the review by the planning board, notification to others, prior to a public meeting by the Board of Selectmen. The Street Acceptance Committee recommended two streets to be placed on this annual town meeting, Ava's Lane and Lauren Lane. The basis for the recommendation was that at least three-quarters of the property owners on these roadways requested this. No betterments required of either of these streets. The town encouraged its owners on private ways to work with the town to bring their roads up to standard so they can be accepted as public ways. This then permits the town to perform snow activities, repairs on the roads, and increases the number of streets in the town, which, under the chapter ninety, helps this town.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Harris had mentioned, there's no betterments being associated with this particular parcel. It's a relatively brand-new neighborhood and road. Both articles, actually, are part of the same neighborhood. The Advisory Board recommended approval of this motion and it was unanimous in its vote. Thank you.
Discussion, there's no one at the mics. I do have a question for purposes of quantum of vote. Ava's Lane and Lauren Lane, are they on a subdivision plan? Yes, okay, thank you. Majority vote. There being no further discussion, all those in favor of acceptance of Ava's Lane signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article twenty-two on the motion, Mr. Harris.
I move that the town vote to accept Lauren Lane as laid out by the Board of Selectmen as a public way.
It's moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Harris.
The backup is just the same as the previous article, like Mark just said, done by the same developer, same town, and it's all, it's up to come.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Sam.
The Advisory Board was unanimous in its vote, recommends approval of the motion.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote for acceptance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article twenty-three, resolution, nuclear safety, the motion, Mr. Harris.
I move that the town adopt the following resolution, that the town of Situate, Massachusetts, opposes the relicensing of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station until all safety improvements recommended by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, as a result of lessons learned from the failures of similarly designed reactors in Fukushima, Japan, have been fully implemented, and requests that the NRC to immediately suspend all further action on the application of the Entergy Corporation for renewal of its license to operate PNP-C until full implementation has been accomplished. The clerk of Situate shall forward the text of this article to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the town's Situate state and federal delegations, the select boards within the emergency planning zone of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station and Entergy Corporation, so that the intent of the citizens of Situate is widely known.
Resolution has been moved as it's seconded, numerous seconds, discussion, Mr. Harris.
If it's our view, Mr. Moderator, I was going to ask the proponent to speak.
Why don't you introduce the proponent? Ma'am, could you introduce yourself? Ma'am, could you introduce yourself to the meeting?
Thank you. I'm Becky Chen, and I co-chair of the Ducksbury Nuclear Advisory Committee.
Okay, great. I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow the non-voter to address the meeting, unless there's objection, you may proceed. Okay, all those in favor allowing the non-voter to speak signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ma'am, you may speak.
Article twenty-three is a town-wide resolution that will send the message that Situate does not exist in a vacuum when it comes to the nuclear reactor just down near coastline. The NRC's own task force has listed twelve immediate action items pursuant to the accident in Japan at the Fukushima nuclear reactor site where four reactors, the same class and design, as Pilgrim exploded last year. Only a few of these items have been ordered by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission to the individual reactor owners and sites in the United States. Two of the fixes include the direct torus vent and spent fuel pool, but they don't go far enough to make these components safer. Last week, our Massachusetts Attorney General filed an appeal to the U.S. First Circuit Court of Appeals, asking that the court force the NRC to reevaluate Pilgrim's environmental impacts and risks in light of last year's nuclear meltdown in Japan. Copley also wants the NRC to address the measures that would be used to reduce these risks before the new license is issued. In March, the town of Ducksbury overwhelmingly voted to support a similar article as here tonight. Kingston is voting tonight. Provincetown voted last week. Marshfield will vote in two weeks. Plymouth will vote a freeze relicensing ballot initiative in May, as well as several other communities on the Cape. I urge you to vote in favor of this article with it, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you this evening.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
Gentlemen, you're on Eight Oceanside Drive, Situate. I've been around with a lot of nuclear things. I've worked on nuclear something, done all that, but I only have one question. Where are we going to get our power? We're building all these big, beautiful buildings, and we're going to expand the schools. Where are we going to get our power? If we pass this, it's going to go down. And believe me, I was a pole lineman. I worked out on those big power lines, the ones that you people don't see. And if you keep getting surges of power, they shut it down, they're going to burn those lines off, and you're going to be in serious trouble. We won't have no power. So, you might as well get your candles ready and your flashlights and find your way home before dawn, because you will have no power. And they're talking about the license. The license means you can't drive a car without a license. If you take the license from them people, they can't operate the power plant, because if they do, fines come, and as far as terrorism goes, back in nineteen seventy, there's a special operations, people don't know what they do. I can speak of it now, because it's thirty years later, you can't get thrown in jail. We had things on the docket where you tried to break into power plants. Now, you fear they arrest these guys, you never hear from them again. Well, we were one of those. Never managed to get into one. They got you before you got in there. So, that's just my opinion, but I'm getting my flashlight ready and my generator, because you're going to need it. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
Janay Yarson, twenty-one B. Road.
Sir.
I'm a nuclear engineer, a registered professional engineer, and I've been designing dutifully great power plants, coal-fired nuclear plants, for the better part of thirty years. I think I want the town of Situate, the town of Situate to know that the Pilgrim Plant, the design of it is, the Mark I, which I used to design in the early seventies, not a single one of them has been sold since nineteen seventy. This design was superseded by the Mark Twos and finally the Mark Threes, and it was recognized, even in the early nineteen seventies when I was working on them, that the Mark I was fatally flawed. And so, I think some of us who have been in the industry long enough have always wondered when the nuclear plant, which nuclear plant had an accident. I'm a supporter of nuclear plants, I designed them, but I know, like many of my competitors and colleagues know, that the Mark I is really not the answer, and I think we're very lucky to have survived forty years without an accident. So, I think what you're not, what some of us proponents are saying is, let's, you're not against nuclear power, we want nuclear power, but let's know that there is a defective design, that most of the industry understands. Let us have an open hearing. Let us learn the lessons of Fukushima, and if we can make the building plant safer, so be it. But we all should recognize that if there's a Fukushima-type accident, then we in Situate and those in downtown Boston will be affected by the radiation boom, that is effective. And we could shut down all the Mark I reactors in this country, and we wouldn't even know the difference in our power capacity. About eighteen percent of the power in this country comes from nuclear power. The Mark I reactors are very small percentage of that, we would not even feel the difference. Pilgrim shuts down every year for refueling. We never know the difference. We are running surplus in gas and in coal, so I urge the fellow citizens of Situate to please vote with this resolution and support Martha, Copley, or AG to say, look, let's have an open hearing, and let's do the right thing. Thank you. Please vote with this resolution.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
George Kelly, four fifty, Country Way. May I ask you, Mr. Moderator, if the woman that just spoke, has she ever been inside the building? Is that okay to ask her?
Of course. Ma'am.
Fifteen years ago, I chaired the school committee for the town of Ducksbury, and I had a private tour through the building.
Okay. I have also. I went with the senior citizens of Situate, and we toured the entire building. I have been in the postal department for over twenty-five years, and then in real estate for sixty years. I have never, ever seen any place as clean as the Plymouth Nuclear Power Plant. It is unbelievable how neat it is. You couldn't ask for better care, and I feel this is not in our jurisdiction even to tell them what, and tell the government what should happen. I think we have enough experts working on these things, and we are in need of power. We've just installed a windmill, we're supposedly going to install some more things on the former dump area.
Thank you.
It's just unbelievable. We think that we know a lot more than the authorities that have been doing these things for fifty to sixty years. Thank you.
We have another non-voter who wishes to address the meeting, Mr. Boson of Plymouth. I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow him to speak unless I hear an objection. I hear an objection. All those in favor of allowing the non-voter to speak signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
You may speak. He was close.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting members. I came as a resident of Plymouth tonight to speak to you on this issue. I feel I've established residency tonight, though I've been here that long, but in any case, my name is Theodore Boson from Plymouth. I am Secretary of the Freeze Plymouth Committee in Plymouth. We've established the same, very similar language in our ballot question, and I've assisted, I give for your selectmen, they voted four to one to put this before you. Briefly, I just wanted to clarify misunderstanding that seems to have been created, this is not a shutdown referendum. In fact, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission can and will keep the plant operating on its current license as long as relicensing is in deliberation, that's indefinitely, and that was stated in the last dissenting opinion by Judge Young of the Atomic Safety and Licensing Board, who in fact agrees with this position. So, you're in good company if you vote for it. The Chairman of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission also agrees with this position, because he voted for it in the dissenting opinion three weeks ago. So, our Attorney General, the Chairman of the two licensing boards that have addressed this question, in basically dissenting, dissenting opinions, agree that the Fukushima lessons need to be addressed in advance of relicensing. It's not about a shutdown. In fact, if these are addressed upfront, they mean more jobs, they mean more revenue for the town of Plymouth, actually. They actually mean safety first. We have pro-nuclear people on our committee who are very much in favor of nuclear power, who want to see these Fukushima lessons addressed upfront, not on the back burner. Just to give you an example, you people are within twenty-five miles of this power plant, but you have no evacuation planning whatsoever. Now, one of the Fukushima recommendations from the lessons learned at Fukushima was indeed to expand the evacuation planning zone. The zone in Fukushima, even though most of the radiation blew out to sea, the zone upon which fallout fell, in actuality, was twenty-five miles. You are well within that twenty-five miles. You have no monitors, you have no emergency sirens, you have no stockpiles of potassium iodide to prevent thyroid cancer, you have no meteor, meteorog, I can't even say it, you know, weather devices, and you have basically no evacuation planning. Okay? Now, this is one of the recommendations, they're going to look into it.
Thirty seconds.
But when are they looking into it? They've decided not to do it within the first five years, not to do it within the second five years, but they have it as a third tier, so you are last on their list. So, all I'm saying to you is stand up for yourself, and simply, it's a non-voting referendum, express yourselves that you ought to be first on their list and not last when it comes to safety. Thanks very much.
Oh, no, please, please. No, everybody's had one whack at. Well, you're everybody, and you're the only one looking for the second. Lady at the right.
Nancy Toppin, twenty-six, Clack Road. Move the question.
Is there a second? All those in favor moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted, declared two-thirds vote, we now advance to the question. All those in favor of the resolution as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The resolution passed. The last item is a motion to adjourn. Before I accept that, I want to thank you all very much for hanging in there and having a good sense of humor about everything. It's been moved to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand and adjourn.